Well, you did. And also, I think we're waiting for...
Do you have Don, John, or Don and Michelle?
Thank you. Who's doing that? Who's doing the... You're doing Gold, Sarah?
Shall I do it? I don't think she's got it.
Shelley? Who's doing mission? Don? Thank you for your patience. We had a few... A little bit of technical difficulty in an accident in Woodbury, so appreciate the patience. We're a little bit late. I'm going to call to order the School Board Business Meeting of September 27, 2018, 6:12 PM. Barbara, could you please take the role?
Certainly. Board Chair Pelletier here. Vice Chair Stipland here. Frisera Pearson here. Clerk Alaklin. Director Hepner.
Here.
Director Hovland.
Here.
Director Patachek.
Here.
You have quorum. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. The District Mission Statement, Don Hovland.
The mission of the Stillwater Area Public Schools, in partnership with students, family, and community, is to develop curious individuals who are active and engaged leaders in an ever-changing world by challenging all students as they travel along their personalized learning pathways.
Thank you. And Golds, Director Pearson?
Thank you. The Stillwater Area Public Schools Board of Education ensures outstanding learning opportunities for the social, emotional, and academic growth of every student in our school district through authentic partnerships and meaningful communication with our community, parents, and students. Every decision is made with a commitment equity for all students and for future generations impacted by our actions. We provide our stakeholders with regular updates on student achievement, along with continual plans to enhance student learning in our district. We ensure that our systems of management and oversight are clearly defined, and we invite ongoing dialogue and partnership with our community to learn from their knowledge and to enhance learning for our students.
Thank you. Item five on the agenda is Approval of the Agenda. Could I please have a motion in a second?
So moved.
I'll second. All those in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Item six is the Superintendent's Report, and that would go to Superintendent Pontrelli.
All right. Thank you. Although we enjoy visiting our schools as much as possible, Dr. McDowell and I have made a commitment to visit every Thursday, and this morning, we started out at the high school. We were able to observe the new co-teaching model in action at the high school, participate with ninth-grade science students engaging in separation experiments, visit with our AP Spanish students who are engaged in writing letters, see our geography students learning more about demographic studies, which we all know a lot about, watching our highly-active students tracking their heart rates in physical education, and our engaged senior citizens playing pickleball, very active game of pickleball, I might add. And then we also were able to improve our American Sign Language skills when visiting with the Sign Language class. It was a highlight of our week to spend time with our students and staff and seeing our students being engaged in learning experiences. Homecoming. Homecoming week has been all this week, as we mentioned at the last board meeting, and the football game is tomorrow night, but I'm not going to share a lot because I'm fairly certain that our students will be sharing a lot of the activities, but I would highly encourage you, if you haven't been to the homecoming carnival last year, it was a fantastic activity and just all kinds of things that our students will tell you more about, so please think about joining us tomorrow night. I'm going to read a short snippet of an article that was in the Star Tribune regarding Lake Elmo and our new playground over at Lake Elmo. When the Lake Elmo PTA found out that a summer city sewer project would require removal of the school's playground, members posed a question: Instead of reinstalling it, could the school replace it with more accessible equipment? A group of our parents and staff researched the options, eventually settling on a blue-and-green playground with swings, slides, climbing elements, and a merry-go-round surrounded with a flat cushioned surface. It was installed this summer, and gone are the curbs and woodchips that limited access for some of our students who use walkers or wheelchairs. "We wanted it to be fun for kids of all abilities, and I think we accomplished that," said Danielle Costello, a member of the volunteer committee. "All kids deserve that experience of being on top at the playground." The district covered two-thirds of the $300,000 cost, and the PTA has collected donations for the rest. Lake Elmo Elementary is the cluster site for our medically complex students in the district. According to an online directory, Minnesota has about 20 accessible playgrounds. Many of our Lake Elmo and community families had to drive to Woodbury's Madison Place to reach one. "This is a phenomenal equipment for our school and for this community," said Aaron Mathis, a paraprofessional at the school. "There are no words for all of us seeing our students get to play together." At a recent dedication ceremony, Principal Stephen Gordy thanked the community for supporting the project with donations that ranged from a quarter dug out of a student's pocket to several thousand dollars. And I just wanted to mention that today because our community really was instrumental in planning and putting that together, and so thank you to the parents, staff, and community of Lake Elmo for making that possible for use for all of our students.
Thank you. Yeah, I would agree. The playground is unbelievable labor of love, and it's just fantastic. I saw it the other day. Next on the agenda tonight is introductory items, and the student report is first. Which one of you gentlemen is going to go?
I'll be starting.
All right.
Hello, my name's Abdulziz Mohammed, and I'm one of the student council presidents at the high school. It has been one busy week at the high school for homecoming, especially for student council. On Monday, we visited Botwell's Landing to crown our senior citizen homecoming royalty. It has been a tradition among student council for the past couple of years to do this, and we hope that they enjoy it as much as we did. We are also preparing for the pep fest tomorrow as well, a time to encourage school spirit and excitement. There will be many fun events lined up such as relay races, Cheval and cheerleader performances, and Nikhil and I getting pied in the face. After that has been completed, the doors will be open for our second annual school carnival, which will include inflatables, food trucks from your favorite restaurants around Stillwater, and much more. The carnival will be scheduled from 2:00 to 4:00 for students only, and it will be open to the public from 4:00 to 6:30, with the homecoming football game following it at 7:00. There will also be a talent show, which will be happening from 3:00 to 4:30 in the cafeteria, so please stop by and enjoy the show. Nikhil and I would like to personally thank the sponsors, the homecoming committee, and the community for the hard work they have put into this. Without them, this wouldn't have been possible. As the saying goes, it truly takes a village. On a final note, as mentioned during the last meeting, students have been adjusting well to the new cellphone policy. With the use of it decreasing during school hours, we see a high level of engagement and success that we hope will continue to grow. We attribute this to favorable outcome, not just to the teachers and administration, but through the cooperation of our diverse student body. With that being said, I turn it over to my co-president, Nikhil Kumaran.
Hello, everyone. As you said, my name's Nikhil Kumaran, and I'll be giving you an update of what's going on within the school regarding activities and what everybody's doing in the past couple of weeks. In the spirit of homecoming, not only football, but other sports and clubs have been working hard in the name of Pony Spirit this past week. As Abdul said, it is a very busy week, but nonetheless, it is also a thrilling time for students. The volleyball team is currently undefeated, their most recent match being Tuesday night, and they also have a game tonight at 7:00 PM at home. Last night, the annual Powderpuff Football Game took place in Pony Stadium. Traditionally, this is a game between senior and junior girls. As a final result, the senior girls took the win with the score of 2-0. The debate team is preparing for their first tournament, which will be held at Eastview High School this Saturday. Students will be debating whether or not the Electoral College should be replaced by direct popular voting system. Students, including myself, have been doing their research and are eager to showcase their knowledge this weekend. Abdul and I will be participating, and we're looking forward to how things turn out. The first day of having flex time implemented in the schedule was on Wednesday. As some of you know, flex time is a concept to provide students with the time within the school day to use how they would please, some use for academic support, what clubs may use it to meet, and students can participate in activities from rock climbing sessions in the gym to competitive team trivia. Recently, the school has switched from using Edupass to Flexisked when it comes to keeping track of students. Though unfamiliar, change can be confusing. Students are learning to use Flexisked efficiently. Nothing's better than the week of positivity and community that homecoming helps to piece together.
Thank you. I think the Powderpuff Game, and no one got injured this year, I don't think, so that's a plus. That's good fun. Next on the agenda is District Recognition, and I believe Denise, you're going to take that?
Sure. Thank you. First, we would like to recognize the VISA Club, and we have Kristin Carter here, who's going to come and speak to us. VISA is for Basic Institute for Zonal African Advancement, and it's an international nonprofit organization dedicated to the empowerment of the youngest citizens of the southeastern and deep south zones of Nigeria through grassroots effort to eliminate child labor, child trafficking, domestic servitude, and to provide education through sponsorship and micro grant programs for the families. And I'll let Kristin and the students take it. Thank you.
Sorry. So, our names are Abdulziz Mohammed and Kate Pelletier, and we here as the Presidents of Stillwater Area High School VISA Club. The other President, Jack Sype, unfortunately could not be here tonight. It was hearing Oke Anyanu, the founder of the twin cities-based organization VISA, speak on SHS Amnesty Day that we and 40 other students were inspired to take action to make a difference. Oke is a Nigerian-American that created the larger VISA organization to help children in Nigeria, who are already victims of human trafficking or child labor or at high risk. We started VISA Club just eight months ago with the same purpose and goal of sponsoring one child's education and well-being.
Through fundraising, volunteering at Kowalski's, a Chipotle night, and generous donation from National Honor Society, we now sponsor three children. Teachers and families have formed sponsorship teams to sponsor two additional children, making it five, that now attend school and have a very different future ahead of them than what they would have previously had. While continuing our commitment to these children, our goal now is to create more sponsorship teams to help more children through education. We are the first VISA club ever created, with hopes of more to come in other schools across the world.
On Saturday, October 6, at 6:30 PM, Oke Anyanu will speak at our school. His message and determination is powerful and will surely resonate amongst anyone who attends. Tickets are free, and we'd like to extend an invitation to each of you and everyone else who is willing to hear our cause. It is an incredible connection between Minnesota and Nigeria, supported by many Minnesota families and now Stillwater students as well. Thank you.
Yeah. Does anyone have any questions or comments for the kids? Director Alaklin did.
Thank you very much, Kate Abdul. Could you just talk a little more about that event on Saturday, October 6, just some details?
Yeah, so it is at the Stillwater High School Auditorium, and Oke will be speaking about the issue in Nigeria right now. And then after, we'll be playing the movie that Oke made, which addresses the children that he has saved, or not saved, but he has sent to school. And then there'll also be chances for other people to sponsor other kids, and there'll be concessions, so.
What was the date again?
We have the October 6, and we have the flyer, so we'll put it on the back table so people can see that.
Any other questions?
I would just like to say that, of course, I'm biased, because this is my child, so how can I not be? But Abdul and the work, Profay Carter, this is what I found to be, it's just being Kate's mom and knowing a little bit more about it than the typical person, it is a tangible way for our kids to go beyond themselves and create a relationship with this other country and to have a tangible way to benefit someone else, and that is, you can't put a price tag on that type of experience. So I want to thank you, Profay Carter, for kind of bringing that to the kids, and the kids are quite awesome, if I might be able to say that too. So, thank you so much. Thank you.
All right. We have a couple more. Awesome.
Great evening. We'd like to ask Daryl Salmy, I saw him sneak in, if he would come forward. Daryl, Salmy has been named the 2018 Secondary Teacher of the Year by the Minnesota Society of Health and Physical Education Teachers. This award recognizes his outstanding service and contributions in secondary school education. Daryl has taught physical education and health in the Stillwater Area Public School District for 22 years. He also serves as a football and strength and conditioning coach. Daryl has been an active leader in helping to advance physical education opportunity for all district students. He's even presented on health and physical education at the local, regional, and national level, and if you remember, Daryl was also one of the organizers of the Midwestern Summit for Physical Education this summer here, a first for Stillwater, so welcome, Daryl.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate you inviting me and for the warm welcome and recognition. It's very humbling. I really do work amongst many great PE and health teachers, so to be singled out is great, but also a little bit hard, because I think so many people are deserving. So, but that being said, I do truly say thank you to everybody. As I was looking around the room, I realized that a lot of people have had an effect on me as a teacher and my growth, and I really want to say thank you to everybody.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Comments or... Director Pearson?
Thank you. Can you just talk about some of your highlights from this school year so far and what you've done in your teaching?
The school year? Okay. Well, the school year's gotten off to a great start. Highlights? I would say that it's been a very smooth start to the year. I think all the kids have settled in well. I thought we had a great start last year as we brought ninth grade to the high school, and I myself transitioned from Oakland to the high school. So for me, that was a big piece of, in terms of finding a highlight, getting started with my feet running on the ground and being very comfortable with the direction we're going and where we're starting, and I felt like the kids were there as well, as the transition went well last year. And for this year, it just means so much more that we can be more focused on curriculum and learning and socializing and communicating and all of those things.
Good. Thank you.
Director Patachek?
Daryl, if you would, and I think a lot of board members have been exposed to the new physical education program and health program.
Yes.
A lot of people watching, a lot of people here tonight, don't know how Fayed has gone through that transition, so if you want to just give us a little peek of some of those themes in her superintendent's report, I think Denise and Bob both saw some of that firsthand as well. But anything you might add to the discussion or understanding?
Sure. Myself, along with many of my colleagues, and I know that Deb Van Clai is here as well, and she's played an integral role in helping us to move forward when we went through with the pep grant, and it opened our eyes to many opportunities in terms of what can physical education and health be in the lives of our students. And in this day and age where we're faced with mental health challenges, you know, throughout our lives, one in five people will be challenged in some way with mental health, that we thought there are ways in which we can implement our curriculum and work with our students and learn so that we can help with mental health. Obviously, physical activity is a big part of that, and we wanted to make sure that we provided enough physical activity, enough of an opportunity for our students so that it would be beneficial. Not only moving, which is awesome, but also the why behind it. Why do we want to move? And educating our students in terms of how to do that safely, how to do that in a meaningful way, and of course, we always want it to be enjoyable. As a people, we tend to gravitate to things that are enjoyable, so that's part of our challenge as well. We've introduced a lot of technology along the way. It was mentioned as well that we hosted a conference, a professional development conference this past August, and many, many of our teachers, 90% of our physical education teachers in Stillwater, spent roughly three-plus days at this conference, learning amongst many teachers and leaders within physical education and health throughout the United States, so that we can bring it back to our students. It's really an honor to be able to do those things in Stillwater, and without the support of everybody here and throughout our district, our community especially too, we couldn't do it. But I remember just quickly, five years ago, Deb and Rachel and myself and many other PE teachers driving out to Illinois to learn about PE and health in Naperville Central, and they've done a lot of really great things, and we wanted to learn about that and see what we could take and use within our community and our schools and within our discipline.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Hepner?
Just a comment. Most teachers teach in isolation. Nobody knows, really, board members or citizens or whatever, what they're doing day-to-day. And if people walk at the PAC Center, you're on display the entire time that we're walking. It's very unusual, and as I've walked, people have said to me, wow, those kids are really working down there, you know, whether it's you or Mark or somebody else doing it. I mean, you have your class going while people are spending their mornings walking around the PAC Center, watching you and watching the kids, you know? And what I've noticed is how much movement there is. People aren't sitting around listening to you talk, or you're not throwing out, you know, the old stereotype, you throw out a ball and go sit somewhere. There's constant movement in the PAC Center. It's fun to watch, and I know it's a very unusual situation for education because people in English and History and so on aren't having people watch them as a class. So thank you for doing that. I'm sure you don't even notice after a while, we're just up there walking, staring at you.
After a while, yes.
Just one last thing. You know, every time I see you, if it's not an intentional conversation, it's a random, oh, I'm working on this, or, you know, what do you think about this? And one thing I want to tell people about Mr. Salmy, the passion is real, the dedication is real, the love for the community is real, there's a reason you got this award, you deserve it, and thank you for everything you do, and don't stop, keep going. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And our final recognition this evening, our students are actually involved in activities this evening and couldn't be here for this, but we've had four students named to the 2019 National Merit Semifinalists. Four of our seniors were named the semifinalists, and they include Abigail Banks-Hemberger, John Maloney, Elias Rohl, and Keenan Walker, and they're among 16,000 seniors in the nation that will earn this recognition. Each year, about 1.6 million students apply, but only 1% are accepted as National Merit Semifinalists. The four Stillwater students will now complete in $75,000 scholarships, for $75,000 worth of scholarships totaling throughout the country more than $31 million. So, we just wanted to take the opportunity to congratulate those students and wish them the best as they continue pursuing those scholarships.
All righty. Moving on is the Open Forum. Before we get going on that, I'm going to read our statement here. Stillwater Area School District welcomes input from citizens as community involvement fosters better decision-making and improved learning experiences for all students. While comments and questions are welcome during open forum, law prohibits the board from discussing concerns about individual employees or students in a public meeting. We will stop the proceedings immediately if employee or student privacy issues are raised and direct the speaker to forward comments regarding individual employees or students to the superintendent. Because we are modeling civil discourse for our community, speakers must present their testimony in a respectful manner. Vulgarity, character attacks, malice, or specific complaints identifying staff or students by name or implication will not be permitted. The board will not deliberate, discuss, or engage in conversation with speakers during open forum. However, the board may ask administration to review concerns presented. Just a reminder that Barbara is keeping time, it's a new policy change, so watch her as you speak. And our first speaker tonight is Jim Franklin. If you could come up and state your address, please.
Hello? Jim Franklin, 642 Midwest Trail Place North. Good evening, members of the board, Chairman Pelletier, Superintendent Pontrelli, and the administrative staff. I've never addressed the board before, but I do feel the need to comment after the conduct I observed at the last board meeting, which I watched via live stream from out of town. For over 10 years, I've been attending as many board meetings as I can. Those that I can't, I try to stream when able. My wife and I volunteered at elementary schools when my children attended. One has recently graduated and is in college, the others attending Stillwater High School. I worked on the last Budget Adjustment Advisory Committee and am currently working on the World's Best Workforce Committee. Through the years, I've seen a good school system get better. During the last meeting, however, I did unfortunately get to see some poor performance from the board itself. I'd like to list and comment on these. Again, it's the behavior, not the individual, I'm concerned with. A 10-year school board member attempted to ask questions on consent agenda items that could have easily been handled beforehand with the proper party. More surprising to me was that he was unaware that the meeting packet is emailed to each member a week prior to the meeting, then stating that he preferred the hard copy and he only had little time to prepare for it. Apparently, he doesn't know about printing, but... Apparently, he doesn't know about printing, but, uh, I checked with the administrative office and I found out that these packets are put in your mailbox a week prior, a hard copy as well, every week. I just wonder how many other meetings over the years board members have, uh, not come prepared for. Another board member interrupted the Superintendent Pontrelli in mid-sentence with a jeering taunt. Back in my kid's elementary school, blurring would not be permitted. I don't know why it is here. Also behaviorally unprofessional was a board member picking a verbally irrelevant fight with another board member. It was almost comical, if it wasn't sad, which was accurately described as wildly off-topic by the chair and thankfully redirected back on track. I'm not sure where this fits, but it was disheartening to see that a board member would respond not only by voice but on camera to a television reporter about an issue that had never previously been discussed with the board, nor was it even an agenda item yet, at the time. Also disturbing is a sitting board member questioning the accuracy of material and the history of the facts presented, suggesting that other parties reread the material where the facts were derived from. I did, and they were accurate. 2014 Long Range Facility Plan was adopted by the board and was accurate. It was nearly mirrored by the two previous, uh, reports made years earlier, except that the actions needed were more urgent than previously. And it has been complied with and was adopted by the board. A South Board Member actually suggested since the board was a 5-2 normal split in 2016, becoming 4-3 split in 2016, and now with the retirement of another board member and the upcoming election, state, quote, "Real questions will be decided on November 16, 2018," quote. The real question will be decided. Really, divisiveness followed by filibuster. Thank you. I appreciate that. Good use of time. This education adjudic, sorry, adjudication of the issue shows a selfish disregard for a board member's fiduciary duty to the 65,000 residents of the community. Every vote cannot possibly go your way, and I'm fairly confident you were aware of this when you ran for your elected position. If you're going to spend your time waiting for like-minded individuals to come on the board, please tell us what you plan to do and how you're going to do it. In the meantime, I feel as disingenuous to waste my time, board members' time, and the administration's time with irrelevant questions and comments just to make others look bad. Transparency for all, including board members, is what I would like. A lot of time seems to be spent pointing fingers on this board, and it's a myopic and uncooperative setting that has precluded the board from addressing important issues. It still surprises me that board members are still having difficulty understanding the difference between general funds versus capital funds. The board working session just reviewed this again last spring and explained the budget deficit for the general fund, as well as the 5% minimum balance required in the fund. A board member last meeting asked where 11 million surplus went. It was explained in this work session, specifically, I believe, the minutes from the January 2016 meeting showed the final split for where some of the money went, or all the money it actually applies for additional 4 million withdrawal.
Mr. Franklin?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm very sorry. We, we have to, it's, your five minutes is up. I apologize, but we have to adhere to our policy, so I'm really sorry.
Oh, I didn't see the, the minutes you usually hold up.
It's over there. Yeah, I'm sorry, it was Barb Prue. She, she was holding it up.
Can I ask you this? Would board members be interested in receiving a copy of what I was to say?
Absolutely. Yeah, please, please send that in. I apologize, I should have specified better.
I could support.
Yeah, thank you so much for speaking. Sorry to have to cut you off like that. Uh, next speaker is Kristi Mack.
Hi, Kristi Mack, 421 West Pine Street. I spoke at a board meeting last March about priorities, wants versus needs, and accountability. The one issue I'd like to focus on tonight is accountability. For example, last March, I asked for a true accounting of the before and afters of the BOLD plan. Did it bring us everything it promised? As we know, the 1.2 million in savings from closing three schools, which was to be an annual savings preventing us from having to make future ongoing budget cuts, never materialized. Why isn't anyone asking our administration why before we make students and teachers pay the price? The closings were supposed to put us on firmer financial footing, but the exact opposite has occurred. In fact, to date, we are facing a budget deficit of 2.5 million, which is roughly double the savings that were projected. We were promised equity. Our superintendent claims all students are receiving equitable learning experiences, but serious inequities exist in our schools regarding class sizes, mental health support, and facilities. The administration is recommending a 5 to 6 million dollar expansion of a new 25 million dollar elementary school, but at the same time, some Lake Elmo students are in portable buildings. Lilly Lake has movable storage units for walls in its fifth grade area. To circle back to my request for a report of the before and afters of BOLD, the response was something like, bold was a good thing. This is not what I call accountability. My employer would never have accepted an answer like that. I don't know why our board would accept an answer like that. In order to remove, or to move forward in a responsible manner, we need to analyze what's been accomplished. Have we accomplished what we said we would? Where have we fallen short? Where do we need to circle back and make corrections before bounding ahead? That's responsible leadership. Taking a moment to analyze where one has been helps to lessen the chances of repeating past mistakes. Again, why isn't this board asking where the 1.2 million in savings went? What happened? That was a huge factor in closing three schools. We need to hold our administration accountable for this. A few things to note that are extremely important for our board and administration to think about. At a time when our kindergarten classes are reported as being smaller than our graduating class, River Grove Charter added another section of kindergarteners this year to accommodate for growth at the charter. When the schools closed and children exited the district, they took precious funding with them. River Grove has been successful because of their, of their, sorry. River Grove has been successful because of the closures, and therefore, in my mind, the loss of funding that District 834 has experienced is of their own doing. One way to look at this is that roughly the number of students lost to River Grove is the number of students we are now trying to accommodate at Brookview. In my opinion, when we closed schools, we sent a clear message that some kids are not as valued in our district as others are, simply because of geography. It didn't have to be this way. We could have had an increase in enrollment and revenue rather than just hoping to come out even, but coming out even will still cost us $6 million. I have spoken many times about lack of trust. The lack of trust resides with our administration and past board decisions, decisions that were never voted on by our community. Because of this, there's a large majority of this community stating they will never vote for another bond or levy again. This is a real concern. How will we fund our schools if this happens? I had a gentleman approach me at the Lumberjack Day Parade this last summer because I was wearing my Tina Riley for school board T-shirt. The gentleman asked me if I was running for board. I told him no, that it was not Tina, rather, I was just supporting her. He actually told me, good, I don't know why you'd want to do anything like that. He proceeded to tell me how upset he was with the state of the district. I've run into old acquaintances telling me they will never give another dime to District 834. Some in our community believe that the answer is to advise people they should leave our district if they aren't happy. That will only exacerbate the problem. The solution to this very real issue is to build trust. You've heard people state this for months and months, some of you have spoken about it, but what have you actually done to achieve trust? Lastly, there is and has been for some time an attitude that if you are not with us, you are against us. That is absolutely false and only widens the divide. For example, I am for a conversation about reopening Oak Park in association with discussing our long-term facility plan for this district. That does not mean that I am against a transition program. It also does not mean I am against staff or students residing at Brookview. All of our schools in this district have value, all of our schools in this district have needs. We need to remember that and come together to provide solutions we can all agree with. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker is Carrie Kelzer.
Good evening. My name's Carrie Kelzer, and I live at 30180 Summer Fields Green. This evening, I'm going to touch upon the past, the present state of things, and the future. As I talk, please consider my overarching points are that of trust and accountability. Here goes. When it came time to vote for against a levy, my husband and I were undecided. We were undecided because it wasn't as a massive amount of money, and more money often does not fix things. Nationally and locally, spending has increased per student throughout numerous presidential administrations, and the outcomes are not improving. However, our decision to vote against the spending came down to something very simple, lack of trust. We received mailers and emails that said if the $97.5 million levy wasn't passed, schools would need to go to a four-day week, and heating and cooling in classrooms would be greatly affected. Our minds were made up in an instant. If using scare tactics was part of the playbook, there was no way you could be trusted to do what you said you would do with our money. And so here we are today. At the start of the 2015-16 school year, we had a fund balance of approximately 11.2 million, now we have a projected budget deficit of 2.5 million. The district's spending is wildly out of control, and the spending priorities seem way off. Also, I do not believe we should be comparing ourselves to other districts, but focus on what's best for our district, district. Besides, 60% of other districts in Minnesota are in the midst of a budget shortfall. Consider the following. Money was spent on improving existing schools only to close them. Currently, we're busing kids in the north a very long ways. Kids in the south can see a school across the street but cannot attend there. We have existing schools that need improvements. We spent $7 million on a bus terminal that we did not need to purchase, which begs the question, is the district in the transportation business or in the education business? 15% to 20%, 20% of our kids are in the district and have some form of dyslexia, and we're spending $660,000 on a literacy program that doesn't support 20% of our students. Classrooms are overcrowded, yet admin thinks they need a bigger and better place. Teachers and students are going without. Why isn't admin willing to do that in the form of a salary hiring freeze? Um, and hopefully, they'll make use of the existing space and not move for now. How many administrators do we really need? How many do we want? What are their salaries? Are they getting yearly raises? Are we too top-heavy? Why is admin talking about using a non-voter-approved lease levy? And what exactly is the amount being considered? How much of every dollar goes directly to the kids in terms of teachers, pairs, books, desks? Half, more, less? I once had a very respected teacher at Rutherford tell me, give me the students, give me the books, and I will teach these kids. She did not need anything fancy to do her job or things that cost a lot of money. Let's talk outcomes. According to the Minnesota Department of Education, the science proficiency ratings at Stillwater have gone from 63.8% in 2017 to 59.5% in 2018. Reading has gone from 70.5% to 69%. Math has gone from 68.9% to 62.2%. These numbers are going down, not up. Consider the role of accountability with other people's money. How is it that no one knows what a $33,000 lien item was used for? Worse, how is it that there are some members who essentially said it's not their job to pay attention to what that money is used for? What about the facilities conversations that are going on? How can some of you be so unwilling to have a reasonable conversation about the facilities' needs for our district? This is not an A or B conversation, it's an all options are on the table conversation. I applaud those who are willing to have those difficult conversations, and I hope everybody will, um, reach that place, whatever the outcome, because this is not a north versus south issue. At issue is the value and worth of kids in every corner of our district. Two final points. First, I want to correct the speaker from the last meeting who said board members sought out KSTP. That is not a true statement and only serves to add to the antagonism. Second, we cannot spend money we do not have. We need to be creative in how we use and allocate the funds that we do have. History teaches us that as Americans, we are excellent at overcoming the odds and reaching victory in what seems to be an impossible situation. Now is such a time for a district, and I would like to know what you're going to do about it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is consent. Uh, under the consent agenda, we have minutes of September 13th, 2018 school board meeting, accept gifts and donations, June, July, and August 2018. Disbursement register, September 15th through the 28th, 2018. Treasures report, June, July, and August 2018, and human resources personnel report. Director Stilland?
Yep, I would like to pull the treasures report for a couple of questions before we approve them.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, could I please have a motion in a second to approve items A, B, C, and E, please?
So moved.
Shelley Pearson in a second.
I'll second.
Director O'Loughlin, all those in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Director Stilland.
Yeah, um, so I'm just kind of following up on a question I asked earlier this week of our finance director, um, regarding the building bonds. In June, in the June report, we talked about how there was a $7 million transfer of funds, and I think you made it, you know, kind of understanding that there was kind of like moving from a savings account to a checking account. But what I didn't really understand is what was that for? Are we, is that, is that for a particular purpose?
I, it's on. Thank you. The $7 million in my response, so I had talked about in the response, and it is in the updated executive summary for anybody who wants to see. I, I had kind of given an overall, uh, general description about, you know, how we make, put investments in, and then if we have, I move money because we have one checking account, we have multiple savings accounts with investments. So that was my initial answer. And then I followed it up with more clarity, because the question was, specific to the Minnesota Trust Term Series, the $7 million. And I said, that is not a transfer, that is an investment.
Okay.
And so what the Minnesota Trust Term Series is, and, and when you look, and you would said, you know, it looks like an okay rate and that sort of thing, it's essentially a 30-day investment. And so we invest as much as we can for as long as we can before we believe we're going to need the cash. That is what that $7 million is. That rate, and it's invested at 30 days, because honestly, 60 and 90 days are giving us less of an interest rate right now. So it's not a transfer between funds, it's an, a $7 million investment in that particular, um, description for 30 days to get a higher interest rate.
Okay, and so was there a reason why we moved that? Is that in preparation for?
It was never moved, it's, it's housed in that fund because until, so when we received, when we essentially sold, um, the proceeds for the bond.
Yeah.
That money went into investment accounts, and as we spend down the bond, less money sits in those investment accounts. The $7 million has always been there. A few months ago, it was 9 million, that was invested in a particular series. So it's what's available to be invested for as long as we can invest, invest it. It was not a movement between accounts.
Okay. So that's coming from the building bond? So we have approximately, before this happened, we had about 15 million in there? Is that right? I'm trying to. So really, this $7 million isn't for any particular purpose, you're just moving it from one account to another?
No, the $7 million is the investment. The $7 million, as you look, you can, it's, we have $7 million invested, and we have, I have 4 million liquid.
Yeah.
So there's 11 million at that time sitting in the account.
For building bond.
Yes, at that time. And so I, you keep a liquid because we do continue to have, uh, to pay bills.
Right.
And then I take as much as I believe I can that we won't need immediately and invest that.
Okay. So there, are there things coming up that we are going to need that money for? Is, I guess that's?
Yes, it will be the, when we actually close on the purchase of the bus terminal.
Okay, so that's what I was wondering.
Then that, you know, and then essentially, that investment will be wiped out because we'll, I mean, we'll still have money left in that account, but essentially, that investment will close, we'll want the money to move to be liquid.
Right.
Once the money is liquid and we close on the account, then it'll move to our checking account, then we'll transfer it out of there to a checking account and pay the bill.
So just to be clear, we have not closed on that property yet.
That is correct.
But we are hoping that we will be sometime soon, perhaps in a 30-day range?
Right, now, and remember, this investment was made, the, uh, the maturity date was July 25th.
Uh-huh.
So that's already matured.
That's right.
Uh, yeah, but yes, we do anticipate closing this month, or, excuse me, in October.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll say, I just have one other quick question. On the treasures reports, um, it lists the funds, and the very top of it is general fund. Is there any way, when we're looking at those month-to-month statements, is there any way for us to know what portion of that is actually unassigned?
No, because this is, it's, it's the difference between cash flow and a fund balance.
Right.
So this is just what's sitting in a bank account, and how, and you can see on the, on the other side, what is in cash and what is in investments. So you're tracking what I'm doing in the bank, but the bank doesn't... So you're tracking what I'm doing in the bank, but the bank doesn't, I mean, the higher the fund balance, usually the more cash we have.
Mm-hmm.
But you can't translate, no, you can't do the two.
Okay.
To get there.
Would there be some way for us to find that information, just to kind of keep a closer eye on where we're at on that fund, on the unassigned fund balance? Because, you know, obviously that's one of our concerns we're looking at closely right now.
It is. The challenge with a fund balance is as, it now comes down to our projections because, again, we have salaries that are, you know, all year long and we have expenses that are all year long and that's why it's an annual reconciliation, if you will, to say this is our bottom line, this is how many students we had in a year. Now, can we make adjustments if we know we've either not spent money that we appropriated or we've spent more than we've appropriated? That's when there can be nuances, but typically it's not a monthly rolling thing because they're based on projections.
Okay. Okay, thank you, that's helpful.
You're welcome.
You good?
Yes.
All right. Okay, so I would like to entertain a motion in a second to pass item D in the consent agenda, please.
So moved.
Director Stilland in a second. I'll second it. All those in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item 10, which is reports. Preschools in our schools, Ms. Burge.
I hope I pronounced that right.
Bergy.
Sorry.
Bergy.
Bergy, sorry. Oh my gosh, yeah. Oh, gosh. Good evening. School Board Chair, Pelletier, Superintendent Pontrelli, and school board members. I want to thank you so much for supporting the preschool program in the elementary buildings. Going into year two, we have had a very strong start to the school year. Currently, we have approximately 434 preschool students in all eight preschool sites and have seen an increase of more families choosing the all-day preschool option. In addition, due to the success of preschool last year, we had most of our preschool classes filled two weeks after registration opened in January.
Wow.
Tonight, I want to take the opportunity to share the benefits of offering preschool in our elementary buildings. The list is long, but I'd like to take some time to highlight a few and then have one of our preschool teachers and a parent share their thoughts as well. I had also invited a kindergarten teacher, but unfortunately, due to an illness, she's not able to be with us tonight. Quality preschool programs like ours help to build a strong foundation for each preschool student's physical, mental, emotional, and social development that prepares them for a lifetime of learning. Our preschool students have enthusiasm and a love for learning. This is evident when you walk into our preschool classrooms. You see engaged children participating in developmentally appropriate activities and play. Attending our preschool program ensures that students are confident and curious, which ultimately prepares them to perform better in elementary school. The preschool environment allows children to acquire vital skills that allow them to listen to others, express their own ideas, make friends, share, and cooperate. We are fortunate to have had all of our teachers trained in responsive classroom. The teachers implement responsive classroom expectations on a daily basis. In addition, our licensed preschool teachers are also implementing the Second Step Social Emotional Curriculum. And this year, all teachers are using Letterland, which is a phonics program, and Fontis and Pinnell Shared Reading Curriculum to help expand on early literacy skills. Overall, we feel fortunate to have a robust learning experience for all of our preschool students. Lastly, we have heard from many kindergarten teachers about the benefits they have seen having preschool in the elementary buildings. They are thrilled to work with preschool teachers because they share the same philosophy of teaching early childhood. Preschool and kindergarten teachers have opportunities to work in PLCs and be part of professional development opportunities. During the PLCs, teachers can share data and continue to work on curriculum alignment. The kindergarten teachers also talk about how they are able to pick out the students who attended the preschool in the elementary buildings because those students know school expectations and routines that are part of responsive classroom. They also stated that students feel comfortable at school and they see how confident they are on the first day. The students also know how to sit and listen at group time and have knowledge of the Letterland characters. As I said early, earlier, the list of benefits is long and I would like to end with one that I think is most important. And that is that we are building strong school-to-home relationships with families and encourage them to be part of their child's love of learning. And tonight, I will turn it over to Ms. Burge.
Hello. Dear board member, parents, and the teachers, good evening to you all. I'm here today in front of you to share with you importance of preschool. I'm the parent of a kindergarten son who just went to preschool last year at Brookview Elementary. And my daughter is currently attending preschool. I also have a son who would be preschooler next year. As a personal experience, preschool was door opener to my son and is shaping for kindergarten. It was important learning for him and he became exposed to numbers, shapes, and more. He learned how to socialize, get along with other children, share and contribute to circle time, and make friends who will hopefully become his best friends later in life. He prepared and gave him skills that he will use in kindergarten and beyond. Preschool education provide my son with an opportunity to start a lifelong love for learning. He learned to give attention. He learned to give attention and making it easier for him to focus in class. He learned language skills that formed the basis for reading and writing. He becomes tractor and to schedule and active. I'm an immigrant parent who did not have the opportunity to go to school and I did not get a formal education. My current had a war right when I became eight years age. Me and my family had to leave and find peace and stability. I'm glad my son went to preschool and thank you for giving me and my family the opportunity to become part of Brookview Elementary School. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
My name is Gina Flynn and I'm very excited to share with you today the benefits of Stillwater Area preschool programming. I'm a parent of three children in our school district and currently, this is my third year teaching preschool at Lily Lake Elementary. Families in our community have the opportunity to either have all-day or half-day preschool programming at their neighborhood school. I've noticed that many of our preschoolers are taking advantage of even riding the bus to and from school, especially if they have older siblings at that site. And the other benefit I've noticed a few of my preschoolers taking advantage of more of a year is the adventure club too, because they also get that right there at their home school before and after. What I love most about our preschool program is that we begin to foster positive relationships with our youngest learners and their families. We are bringing in our district's youngest learners into classrooms that are nurturing and supportive and we encourage curiosity. We begin to instill that passion and that love of lifelong learning that we want all of our children to embrace at such an early age. Preschoolers truly feel connected to their home school and we really are a family. What I appreciate about having the programming at elementary schools is that our preschoolers get a feel for really what it's going to be like in that school. Usually with their preschool teacher, they get access to the gym and the media center so they get access to checking out the library books and bringing that home if they're all-day students. They get to go to the lunch so they get into, we have usually family style at most of our buildings, so it's a little bit different than running through the school lunch line, but they still get familiar with that. They get familiar with the staff that they're going to see. We get invited to the music classroom. They usually have an older grade level perform a little skit for a younger one. So there's just a lot of access to the other classrooms and the teachers and I just think it's already building that community within our school. The other thing that I really love is that they become a part of any kind of event that our school has. If it's a fundraising event, we had huge success last year with a glow run at Lily Lake Elementary. And if, we also had a school carnival as well and I, we embrace the preschoolers. Those are part of our family and I just, I love that we get that at a very early age with them. Sorry, I kind of went off track there. I got really excited. So, let's see, okay. The other thing that I do that, that Mrs. Bergy had touched on as well is that they're starting to understand what it's like to be at a school with the school expectations and we're really helping them get comfortable and get ready for kindergarten. As she had mentioned, we all have been trained in responsive classroom training. We do the morning meeting. They get familiar with what a show five means along other things, but there's just that benefit of building that classroom community. And we hope, you know, we have, we have those expectations that are built into our classrooms on a daily basis. They're learning how to take care of themselves and how to be just a part of a classroom community. And of course, we have a broad range of learning activities, but first and foremost, and my opinion is that the social-emotional is really what we're, what we're trying to take advantage of at that early age. We really want them to be self-regulated and being able to be in a school environment. And I mean, when your, when your heart's ready, you know, your brain is ready to learn. And so, I mean, really, that's what we're trying to stay focused on. So we really build in developmentally appropriate ways of engaging our kiddos in all different kinds of learning activities and really focusing on play-based learning. We believe strongly in addressing and developing, as I mentioned, and supporting the social and emotional needs of our youngest learners, but we do utilize a creative curriculum framework. We do have Fontis and Pinnell Shared Reading. We are piloting an interactive read aloud as well, some of us this year. We have Letterland, Second Step Strategies, Teaching Strategies Gold is another resource that we have that helps prepare our students for kindergarten. And then exciting new change for us this year is being able to also enter our assessment data into eliminate, which I think is really exciting to be able to see where our kids are at and that that can easily roll into the hands of the kindergarten teachers. So the ability, I think, the ability for us to not only align our curriculum with kindergarten standards, but the opportunity for us as preschool teachers to be able to engage with kindergarten teachers have really, I think it's been extremely valuable for us in setting up just that, the best learning foundation we possibly can for our youngest learners. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Well, thank you. So I bet we have a few comments and questions, so probably Ms. Bergy, I am so sorry for that. Oh my gosh. I, I just want to say to start it out, I, Mr. Hovland and I just went to Lily Lake on Wednesday and, you know, when I think back, for me as a big hovering mom when mine were little, I look back into that and think, you know, would I have been scared to have my little preschooler with all these naughty older kids and how does that work? But Dawn and I, Mr. Cox back there kind of took us around the school and I couldn't, it was such a joy to see these little whippersnappers and they just looked happy and I, it warmed my heart to see it. And I want to thank you very much. Clearly, you're doing a fantastic job. So thank you. So I'll open it up. Mr. Director Patachek, please.
Two questions and maybe you can answer or maybe I can answer. Thank you for your service and for the program. I'm a strong believer in what you do and you've convinced me even more tonight, so I appreciate that. Thank you. The questions I have is this. One, I think you've made a powerful, powerful case for why we should have this for all kids. As we look at the potential number of kids, do we have any statistics or ideas of how many of the kids who go to kindergarten, we had go through preschool?
So we are still waiting for this, the most recent numbers, but as of last year, and I believe this is shared with the board every year, and if I recall correctly, last year's was around 87%. Is that accurate?
Yeah. And then a second question that's related to that, and thank you for that, is you know and I know because years ago, we didn't have it in all our elementary schools. We only had a small percentage. But what you did is you ran a pilot study. Yes. And found that kids who start out preschool, the retention rate, it seems to me it was like 82, 83%.
That's common.
Has that held up?
Well, it varies each year.
Okay.
And so we'll have to see what this year the results are, but that typically speaking, we've been in that range of between 80 and, well, like I said, last year was 87%, which was higher than perhaps some other years. So it varies.
Okay. And another reason and rationale for doing the programs is the retention rate and what you do to have kids become and their parents more familiar with the surroundings. So thank you.
Director Stilland?
Thank you. So, thank you. This is, this is really exciting. I love that we have preschools in our elementary schools. I think it makes a lot of sense. I'm kind of curious to know, are, are most of the preschool students in there for the full day, like the same as a kindergartner? Is it all day? Or is there an option?
There is an option.
Okay.
All of our elementary buildings, we offer half and full-day programming.
Okay.
At the Early Childhood Family Center, it is only half-day programming.
Okay.
For our three and four-year-olds.
Okay.
And I would say that we probably increased, my best approximation, about 25% more students are staying full days.
That's great. They must be loving it.
Yes.
Both kids and parents.
Yes.
And I think it's amazing that some of them are taking the bus.
Yeah.
I remember not wanting to put my kindergartner on the bus, I can't imagine, but I guess...
Thanks. If those that don't take it, then they...
That's fine, right, yeah.
They're jealous.
That's pretty cool. That's really neat. And I love the fact that we have this, probably about 87%, you know, people that go through the preschool program want to stay. 434, my goodness, that's a lot of kids, that's amazing. Do you think that there would be interest? Because I know that before this kind of expanded the way it has, there was further studies to see that this is an underserved area, I mean, we didn't have enough preschool programming spaces in the district area, so part of the reason why this has been so successful is it's filling a real need in our community.
Absolutely.
Is it, could we do more? I mean, if we had more space, would we?
Well, we certainly have waiting lists. However, you know, there, I guess I don't know what the ultimate goal is. We certainly do not intend to oversaturate the market.
Yeah.
Our intent is really to fill the need. And as you were alluding to, when we did the study, we found that only about, there was only sufficient capacity within the district, district boundaries to around 50% of our preschoolers. And the, just to be clear, the 400 and...
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four is also three-year-olds. So that's not just four-year-olds, that is.
Okay. Yes, that's correct.
Somewhere around, how many three-year-olds?
Oh, three, three, thirty-ish, probably.
For the high, for the four-year-olds, 334-year-olds.
Okay. So about two to one, yeah.
Yeah.
Wow, that's great. Well, something to think about for, for future. But, yeah, thank you so much for everything you do. Thanks for the presentation. It's fun to hear about this.
Yeah.
Director Pearson, did you have something?
That was my question, what the breakdown was, so thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. All righty, moving on to reports. Item 10B, Finance and Facility Conversations. This is Superintendent Pontrelli. Just briefly, we've had about seven finance meetings in the past year. The board wanted an intentional focus on, on finance, on education, so we've really stepped up in that regard. We are, this discussion, we're hoping to keep close to an hour because it's a very important and big topic. So the hope is at the end of this that we can kind of have some ideas to direct staff to, to kind of do a deeper dive into some of these issues. That's the hope. And the bulk of this work is going to be in a four-hour work session that we have coming up on, I believe that date was set for...
October 10.
October 10. We just got that solidified.
I think so.
So that's going to be where we have quite a bit of the work. So I will turn it over... So, I will turn it over at this time to Superintendent Pontrelli.
All right. Thank you. See if we get our first slide up here. Oh, there we go. Thank you, Krista. Before I get started, for those of you who might not be aware, posted in the board materials, there's an executive summary which connects the dots for the last several years in the work around finance, facilities, capacity, and enrollment. And so, if you haven't looked at that, please take a look at it because some of the things I heard tonight during open forum just simply are not accurate. And I wanna make sure that people have accurate information when they're making their decisions and statements. We're going to start this evening with just some higher-level things for the board to consider. These considerations are what the administration would request decisions on so we can do our work moving forward to be ready for our students. The first is looking at short-term decisions within about 60 days. These decisions, the first is to address the current 2.5 million general fund deficit spending and ask for board action on those decisions by December 2018. Folks may ask why that's important to have it by December. We staff and register students in December. And so, we need to have those decisions if we're going to make changes in staffing and programming. Also, I want to comment, one of our speakers this evening asked about the 1.2 million-dollar savings. And that's just not accurate. The 1.2 million-dollar savings that we incurred from school, incurred from school consolidation was reinvested into our students. And if you go back to the October 13th, 2016, two years ago, Presentation on Future Funding Needs, at that time, we shared that annual costs based on grade configurations would be anywhere from 1.3 to over $2 million. That included transportation, moving to a middle school model that has more wraparound services for our students, and a high school support staff to support the new Pony Activity Center for our ninth graders. Secondly, the second bullet is a decision to build out Brookview Elementary to be ready to welcome students and families in the fall of 2020. And to be able to do that, we would need board action by December to be able to start the planning. Many people ask, why 18 months? About 12 months of that is working with the cities to do the planning and make sure that we have everything in place for construction to begin. Folks ask, why, you know, why don't we do something else? Why don't we look at Lake Elmo? Why don't we look at Oak Park? We are going to be sharing with the board and having an expert come in and talk to you a little bit about what that might look like. But basically, as soon as we would open those, what we expect to be probably six extra classrooms, they will be full. Two of the neighborhoods who currently attend Lake Elmo would be shifted most likely down to Brookview. That's all part of a bigger process that we have to do. But there are, when you go down to Brookview and look out the back door, you can see that there are large developments being built. For the long term, for the next three to 12 months, we are recommending that the board charge administration to convene a long-range facilities planning task force, including financial implications. This is something important if you are new to Stillwater, haven't been following the story for some time. With a middle school and a high school ninth-grade academy model, both of those had financial implications that were not considered before that, that move. And so, part of what you've seen the last couple of years is trying to find funds within our current budget to support those. They are great for student learning. We're happy that we have them. But we need to plan ahead of time of what those financial implications might be. The second bullet, identifying the school board's spending priorities for the future. And if new spending is required, identify from where the funding will come. A decision regarding the move of central services staff to Oak Park and sell the central services staff building. One of the reasons we've had conversations about that is indeed to use taxpayer dollars more wisely. We believe that we should be opening up Brookview. We don't see a situation where we wouldn't want to do that. And what we're trying to do is use the facilities that the taxpayers have paid for in the past, if we don't need them, to sell them, to reinvest in that, to make it a minimal price to, for adding on to those classrooms. And then finally, the decisions regarding revenue enhancement opportunities to address short and long-term financial needs. And hopefully, the next few slides that we share with you will help you understand why that is. I'm gonna go ahead here and add in the little bullets that you see. If you look at this graph, this graph, what we're trying to share with you, and you've seen this from previous presentations also, was that in the 2015-16 school year, the school board approved moving $4 million from the unassigned, unassigned fund balance to pay for technology upgrades, our transitions to the new grade levels, and for class size. If you remember, at that time, class size was increased, we increased 14.6 full-time equivalents in teaching staff to address class size and eliminate multi-age, multi-grading. When you can, when you look across the top, the budget deficit that we're looking at right now is not due to school consolidation or not using those funds correctly for our students. It really is due to our contracts across the district. And as you can see, after the school board took money to put towards the technology, class size, and transitions, we remained fairly level, but then started to drop. And in 2017, we had a conversation with the school board that we really are at a crossroads. We've done everything we could as an administration to use our money and our space wisely and that we would indeed have to make some hard decisions moving forward. The next is another graph for the unassigned general fund balance projections. And if you can see, look at the arrow to the left, that is indicating our 5% goal. The school board has a policy that they will keep their fund balance at about 5%. And you can see there the drop that we have from going down below the 5% goal and how that will continue if we don't do something. It also shows you towards the far right of the graph, even if we assume a referendum renewal, we're still going to be making difficult decisions if funding doesn't improve for school So, we want to be able to give the school board some time to have some discussions about this. And we are here to support if there are questions. Once again, we have the executive summary. We've had seven sessions on finance and helping the board and community understand school, school finance. And hopefully, you have all the information with the questions and things that we provided you this week. I do wanna make one comment, that there are a few questions that are going to take considerable time to be able to pull the information for, together. Some of those are five-year-plus projections on numbers of staff that are in the hundreds. So, that will take some time.
Thank you. At this time, I'll just open it up for discussion, questions. Director Pearson?
Just have Superintendent Pontrelli a clarifying question on the unassigned fund balance slide. When you look at the yellow bubbles, just because on first glance, so that equals 4 million, but it doesn't go down 4 million. So, can you explain what's going on there?
Yeah. If you, and I'll have, because I can't see the numbers from up here, but if you look at the, 2 million of it was, that doesn't really help me either because.
It's still small, right?
It is still small. What, Bob? I'm sorry.
Please reference. I think the easiest. I don't think you're on.
Would be so kind as to open the executive summary and look at page three. That helps with the visualization of the, the numbers. You can actually see them a little better than what's on the screen.
Thank you. Thank you. And the, on page three of the summary, I think also explains to you, you can see how the drop is. This mimics what you see on the screen, on your, on your screen. So, the amount would have stayed the same or at a 6.4% fund balance before we had contracts. And remember, some of those are compounding, so it's not the same every year. Each year, we compound, have compounded interest that makes a difference on that. And we move the, we move the funds to assigned from unassigned. We moved it, those four, those four, or those three bubbles for the 4 million, that's not represented because this is unassigned. You moved that to assigned.
Okay. I think that's where the confusion comes from because that shows 11.7 million, but then the top number on the other is only 9.
Right. So, the bubbles were moved to assigned fund balance.
Okay.
Anyone else?
That's a good point. The bubbles are trying to show you when that happened.
Okay.
Director Patachek, do you have a question, comment?
Well, and, and I think it's been answered, but that was my question because here, 2015, 2016, it initially was $11 million. So, I think you've clarified that. And then, it goes to 2016, 17, and it's 7 million. Thank you.
Any other?
Do you want us to stay in page order?
I honestly, I think, I'll just be honest, for me, I, you know, I've read through this. I'm, I think we need to be able to have a transparent and comfortable conversation. So, wherever you feel comfortable, Director Patachek, go right ahead.
First of all, I wanna say, as I've looked at this, and I've looked at it several times, there's a lot of information here. And I thank the administration for putting it together. There's some areas that I don't completely agree with, but for now, I'll put those aside and hold some of those for the retreat. But in particular, an area that struck me, and, and some of it I'm still digesting, and maybe I'm a slow learner, I don't know. But let's go to page eight, if you would. And on page eight, there's a chart that talks about highest enrollment and current enrollment. And I'm on the latest rendition of this because I think this was last minute, might have changed the pages a little bit. And what it talks about, I think, on that page and the point, is that the current enrollment, which is 2018, 2019, and what those figures are for each of the elementaries. Then it talks about historically, going back, I think as far as 2002, the highest enrollment that was ever in those buildings. So, I've got a couple of questions on those. One, where we have the current enrollment in the elementaries and those numbers that are listed in there, do those include the pre-K programs or not? So, that's the first question I have. It does not. Okay. And, and I'm not in a rush to get that answer, but I think eventually. The other question I have, and this is, I think, an important one. It seems to me we need somewhere an agreed kind of goal standard. And what I mean by that is this. I looked at those numbers and, and I've gone through an awful lot of the information that we've gotten. And I kept thinking to myself, boy, those weren't the numbers that I was aware of. And, and I don't know for highest enrollment where those numbers come from. What I use as my standard that I go back to is the October 2nd and 3rd report. And so, what I did is go back to that. And for 2017, 2017 to 18, I believe Lake Elmo in there, and I'd have to pull it out, and I can't because I brought it with me. And I'm actually, I'm sorry. I'm actually on 2016, 2017 district enrollment information. And that's what I'm working off of. And as I look at Lake Elmo there, page one, the figures for the total Lake Elmo is 800. And that's when it was a K6 building. Now, what I'm asking, and bear with me, please, is I'm not trying to argue numbers as much as I'm saying, can we agree on what we're going to use as a source of our numbers?
I believe the sole purpose of that chart is to show that in the past, with the exception of Brookview, because it's new, all of our schools have had some significantly more students in it than now. Lily Lake, 161. Rutherford, 160. So, the one on the back is just highest enrollment, what it's been in the past. The one on the right is to a student. Our principals and Dr. McDowell went to every school, counted every child. So, these are current on the right-hand side here as seats in class as of this past week.
Including pre-K?
Uh, go ahead, Kristin.
The one thing I'd like to address specific to that, that Lake Elmo number that year, if you recall, that was the year that we had moved sixth grade at Lake Elmo to Oakland. And because Oakland was not a reporting entity because they weren't, they were structured as a 7-9 in Mars, they had, those students had to have a home as a reporting entity. So, their home was listed as Lake Elmo even though their physical point of instruction was Oakland. And so, that's why that report listed, and it looks like 800, but they actually, you should probably take about 120 or 130 kids off of that number because that's what was physically housed at Lake Elmo. And that one year was an exception, but that's why.
So, it's roughly 22 students then that were in that sixth grade? Is that what you're saying?
120 to 130 in that sixth grade class, if I, it's in there somewhere.
Director Hapner?
In the, in the October 2nd, 2017 enrollment, I've got at Lake Elmo, 598. I don't know if that's the same one that I'm looking at, Mike. But that's 598 without pre-K.
And, and the numbers do not include pre-K?
Yeah. But, but again, what I'm kind of asking for is we agree on what's going to be our source for these, whether it's October 2nd, 3rd, when this report usually comes out. Is that about the same time we send it into the state MDE?
So, those numbers are drawn October 1st. I mean, we send enrollment data into the state all year long. October 1st is, or the first Monday after, is the numbers that are used for particular funding reasons. And so, that's kind of why that's the demarcation of why. We do updates to the state all of the time, but that's why we go off of October 1. I believe my office actually houses, it's actually quite a, and I, you guys, I believe you've seen it, but it's a, it's a one-page document that's actually the history of the district. Like, at this time, this is when St. Coy Prep opened, and this is when Forest Hills existed. And you can see, it tracks the enrollment number based on October through that document. And that is the source that we could grab from the highest number of students in that particular building at that time. So, that is, it was just trying to say current enrollment, which were essentially start-of-school enrollment numbers because we're not at October 1 yet for at least that data.
Okay. So, those numbers are, those are set on October 1st. But what we use always is the budget assumption numbers. And that's when the budget committee sits down and looks at what's our enrollment going to decrease, increase? You remember when, with the opening of River Grove, some anticipated it to be 200, 300. It's more like 100 so for us. But that was all part of our budget assumptions, so we adjusted the budget with that. So, when we talk finances, it's based on our budget assumptions that we've made as a group and have been accepted. The numbers, the, the actual numbers are actually the dollars that come in. So, October 1st are the dollars that come in, but our budget is based on the budget assumption committee's recommendations.
Director Patachek, do you feel satisfied with that answer?
Well, I want a common source that we can go to. And obviously, if I'm using these documents which tell about kids' movement and everything else, and that's not the source, okay, that's fine.
It is the source.
But I'm saying what source we're gonna use. So, as board members or, or anybody in the audience or, or community, if they wanna go to the numbers and they wanted to see what you're using from the budget source, where can they find those?
So, it's, when you talk, it, in, I think the, the confusion lies, is when the conversation moves from capacity to budget. Because when you're having a capacity conversation, you're, you're taking numbers from that enrollment doc and how kids move about. Now, you can, you know, you can make projections off of that, and the budget committee can look at that. But that.
can make projections off of that, and the budget committee can look at that. But that, that's looking at, you know, capacity numbers. I mean, when we grab those numbers from October 1 and see history and see trend, and then are we going to, do we anticipate growth? Do we, you know, what's our retention, all of that. When we're truly talking about predicting finances or working on a budget, then we're talking about, the budget committee looks at that, but they're also looking at other sources of information, too, whether it's demographics or, you know, what they believe is trend. There's other things that come into play as we talk finances. So there, there's, that source document is used for a variety of purposes. It's one piece of what the finance, or the budget committee uses in assumptions. It's one piece is that document. That is the standard. We use the October numbers. But it's not the only piece for budget.
So for planning purposes, for what we're looking at here, facility usage, is that the place we should be going, or should we be going to this October 1st, 2nd, 3rd report?
So just to be, so to be clear with regard to facility usage, what we, what we try to do to help figure out to what degree a facility is being used is to go to each room in that facility and see, the number that gets used for an average is 25. So for, so for number purposes, from a capacity for facility usage, we would be going up against how many available rooms, kind of that one chart at the very end of this that I provided. That's what we would use, that's what we would use for that discussion from a common, so we have a common ground of that. I think what Kristin shared, the October 1 numbers would be a good count. However, they may or may not be the most accurate. I mean, if we could go to each building on any given day and say, okay, do, what do we have today in there, which is, would be the most accurate. But for a common starting point, I would go with the October 1s and then put them up against that, again, that capacity chart that we put at the end, so we can kind of navigate back and forth between those, at least as a starting point. And then we could shift, I mean, if we would decide that we wanted a different, some different type of chart, we could figure that out.
I'm just saying, if I want the numbers, where do I go? And I'm saying presently, I'm doing the October. Should I be doing that, or should I be doing something else?
I guess I could, what I'm waiting for is for October 1 to come, to see if they're any different than what we've done normally. And then I will be using October 1 numbers to see if there's any changes. And then after October 1st, if we got, let's say we got to January, what I would typically do is, is go and look at what the monthly enrollment comes in. So every month, there's a monthly enrollment chart, and just see if we're off at all with gains and losses. But other than that, I would, I'm in the same boat. I would start with the October 1 numbers, and that's kind of, everything so far is best guess until we get to next Monday, really.
And so before we switch off this page, if somebody else has a question on this chart, otherwise, as long as we're here, one other real quick one. And that is, when you put highest enrollment there, are you trying to say the building at one time had more kids in, or they packed them in? That's no implication that we want to go in that direction?
Correct. No, it's just to try and give an idea of, it is not at all a suggestion that we want to go there. It's just that's to provide context, because I think one of the things that is, that always comes up is this question of, is a building at capacity and whatever that, right? So it's this thing we're always trying to grab for. And it's trying to get, I think, it's the question you're after is, what's our common, what's going to be the common point when we say building capacity? And we just need to decide on that. So the only point of that chart is just to say, here's kind of where, what we could find is the most amount of kids that were in that building at any given time. But I think the way we've structured instructional spaces, even most recently, we wouldn't get back up to that number. If you really had to, could you? Well, I suppose you could, if you had to. But I, it's not at all a suggestion that we should.
Thank you.
I really appreciate that, and I appreciate that you did that, provided that information, because I think a lot, a lot of people in the community, and myself included, just had questions about that. And it's definitely not ideal, and, but it's nice to see where we've been. So Sarah Stivlin had a question along the same lines.
Just a quick follow-up. So the October 1 count, we're going to have our work session, I believe, on October 10th. Will we be able to get some preliminary numbers by that point? I mean, not finalized, obviously, yet, but just a general, like, snapshot?
Bob's shaking his head, yes. It's my office that has the work. So the, the answer is, we will, we will have, like, like Bob was talking, we will have the monthly enrollment. You'll see what that is. What we're not going to have ready, because it takes a little bit of time to reduce, is where are the kids going? Who stayed in their attendance area? That's a significant amount of information to compile. Will we have a monthly enrollment snapshot? We absolutely will.
Yeah. Yeah. I know that's a big document, and I love looking at it every year. It's like really digging into where everybody is. And, and yeah, it's really cool. I realize it takes a lot of time to put that together, but just a general snapshot. So then, is that also that October 1 number, is that what goes to, to help determine what our local levies are going to be? Is that what, the number they use? Or do they, does that adjust throughout the year?
The, the number, what is used for the levies is, it's the estimate that we're using back to information for levies is entered in July.
Okay.
And so it's an estimate of where we think we're going to be for the next three years. So it's essentially using what the budget committee assumed we were going to be
Okay.
and placing that in there. What happens then with the levy is every year, as the numbers are finalized, that's where your adjustments in the levy come in, because they either give you more or take away, depending on how accurate that student count was.
Okay. Okay. That's cool. Thank you. Director Pearson?
Thank you. So Dr. McDowell, at some point, I think you had shared with us an ideal capacity chart. Is that correct?
Yes.
And would that still be accurate, or have you?
That's what we're staffing. So, so to get to that ideal, what we, what we quote-unquote called ideal number when we're planning is, we took the number of 25, because if you take our staffing ratio, so in this document, there's the staffing ratio piece, which ranges depending upon grade level. So the average of that is 25. So if, the theory is, if you walk around to every classroom, and then you multiply those available classrooms in a building by 25, that would give you roughly the ideal capacity as an average between there. So that's, that's kind of what you shoot for, because it's, it depends upon section numbers and a grade, I mean, it all, it's a more complex when you actually have kids there, because you may have three sections that are getting staffed at 29, and you may have three sections that are getting staffed at 27, and that, or 22, that could throw things off. But generally, it's a 25, 25 kids per classroom, and then just knowing, we've mapped out in every building what are, and these are full classrooms. These aren't a small room that we're going to try and stuff kids into. This is a, typically a 900-square-foot average classroom size is what's considered a classroom.
Okay. And do you feel like that's the best, I know it's hard to pick, what's the best number, but when we're looking at Lake Elmo, for instance, does that take into account maybe areas that might not be able to be classrooms any longer that we've used before, that maybe aren't the best environment? Or is that just taking, there's this many classrooms times 25 kids?
No. What, what we did is, we, we sat, actually, the part that we did for the charts that I put at the end of this, Mr. Germerhausen and I went to every building and sat down with every principal current year, and I, with a map, went, okay, what rooms are being used for actual classrooms in your building that are big enough to be classrooms, and those we counted as classrooms? What are rooms in your building that are too small to even be considered as a classroom? What are rooms that you're using for something else currently? And if you didn't have that, if we needed that space for a classroom, could it be a classroom?
Sure.
And so, again, on that chart, that's why you'll see, let me go, maybe it'll be helpful to jump around. I believe it's at the very end of the document, at least in the packet, in the board packet, it's at the end. It's after page 17. It has Afton-Lakeland at the top.
So it's like gray and black?
That's it. That's the one. So just to try and make some sense of it, Afton-Lakeland's a perfect example, because we didn't want to, I didn't want you to look at this and then think we could just turn everything into a classroom, right? So if you look down the left-hand side, you'll see right before 20th, the green at the bottom toes, you'll see one room is, one room is designated as an intervention room right now, and one room is totally open at Afton-Lakeland. So, and then to the right of that, you'll see that they both turned to zero, and at Afton, that's where we recaptured two possible spaces. So the reason for that is, the room that is set aside currently as an intervention room is a big enough room to be a classroom. So, and intervention typically doesn't have full-size classes in it. So the theory is, if we needed to, we would find a smaller space to use as an intervention space that would still be appropriate, and reallocate that giant, or not giant room, but regular-sized classroom as a classroom. The other one that's open, they currently don't use as anything. They're calling it a flex room right now, so it's open. So anywhere on that chart, if you see that happen, that's what's happening. Anything in a building that was smaller than a classroom size, or there was no way we could use it for a regular classroom, was not included as an option. So we tried to go as conservative as possible, because again, those other numbers are not suggestions to get those buildings to that
Right.
number of kids in them again. It's what would be reasonable to do.
Can you, to that, kind of to that point, Bob, could you please speak to the Lake Elmo Elementary? And I, we had the tour there, and I just want a little clarification or reminder on that. The two classrooms that are upstairs, that when my kids attended, used to be used for full classrooms.
Correct.
They are not currently being used for classrooms. They are being used for
Intervention rooms.
So those are the two intervention rooms that are listed on?
Yep. So from a space conversation, from a space conversation, Lake Elmo has two, just like I explained at, at Afton-Lakeland, Lake Elmo is using those two classrooms, one for math and one for reading. So, kind of by definition of the theory that I just explained, you could use, they're big rooms to be used. It isn't saying that you should or you would, but they could, from a space, because that's the only way you can stay true to the capacity conversation, is that they're available. The next follow-up conversation is, do you want to use those spaces?
Right.
And do you have a place big enough and feasible enough for someone else? So they're, so it's a layered conversation, not a suggestion.
Thank you very much for that answer. Any, any other, any questions? More questions? Anyone? I have a lot, so, but, I don't know. Director Patachuk?
And again, if somebody hasn't spoken who wants to, I can, I can wait. But I'm on that same topic with Lake Elmo. And particularly, that's what strikes me about that chart. Because here's, I've asked, and people know this a number of times, is Lake Elmo up to snuff, even in the additional long-term facility upgrades that we're going to do? Where does that leave us? Because in conversations that I've heard, where Lake Elmo has a smaller population, which it does right now, it's pretty good shape. If it were taking those classrooms and others in that building, and having to utilize them because you've got an additional 60, 100, 200 students, and we know that it's gone well over 700, then it's a different matter. What I'm, my bottom line, my concern is, is we talk about additional facilities for Brookview, that we not forget about Lake Elmo, because I don't know, in terms of future needs, population, and if they grow as fast, and I, I drive Lake, Lake Elmo Boulevard, and I drive by the elementary, or I go by the airport, and I see some huge developments going in with lots of houses. Now, my point is, it kind of gets to what you were talking about. If you're saying it's a room, yes. If it's an acceptable room, particularly when the neighbors close to the south have this very new sparkling building, I think we ought to address that, or at least consider it as, as a board. What I personally have asked for and would love and envious that Jen and Don got to take the tour, is for other board members who were interested, is to go through the Lake Elmo facility. I still have, and it dates back to the old times, when I received two letters, and as I was looking for and have found the long-range plan in those, they talk about many of the inadequacies of Lake Elmo. Now, I realize some of those, the playground, the sewer system, have been addressed, and some others are being addressed. But I kind of want a look into what else needs to be done to make it at least comparable to some of our other facilities.
You know, I, I, thanks for that comment. Director Patachuk, I, I agree. That's one thing that Director Hublin and I talked about. You know, maybe at some point, we don't want to overtax our, our building leaders and, you know, constantly have them walking, walking us around for tours. But I think it would be beneficial to us to see it on some sort of regular basis. Maybe we do that once a year, and think about that, ponder that a little bit. And because it is good to be in the building and see, see what's working, see, you know, what's not. I do believe, however, that Brookview is quite a separate discussion than, than Lake Elmo. I think both of them are equally important discussions to have on a separate level. So Director Alakland?
So I completely agree with Director Patachuk. And in fact, I remember when Director Pearson and I had some of those really candid, frank conversations and questions that, when we first were elected and, and came on, because the board at that time was in the middle of going through the long-range facility plan, and looking through that, what they wanted to put on the, on the ballot for, for a bond. And that is something that has absolutely been a topic of conversation for as many years as I've been a parent in this district. So I absolutely concur. So, unfortunately, just in the bond, that was not addressed. And that's not a knock on any of my fellow board members who were on the, the board at that time, but it simply was, it was talked about at, at length, but it just, that was not the choice that the board decided to go at that time. I do remember when Superintendent Pontrelli came on, and that was one of the first things that you talked about, was Lake Elmo needs some attention. It needs some TLC. We need to take a serious look at, at the infrastructure, some capacity, how can we use that space better? So I just want to remind, you know, everyone that that, that's been a focus of, of ours for, for several years.
Thank you. Director Pearson, did you have your hand up? No? I was envisioning, I was dreaming that.
I'll go.
Okay, Sarah?
Okay. So I just have a couple of thoughts. I appreciate that we're having this conversation. When I look at the title, Finance and Facilities and Short-Term and Long-Term, this is a really big topic. There's a lot going on here. And for me, I think what I'm hoping we get out of this conversation is a little bit of clarity as far as what our retreat coming up is going to be about, and what, maybe if we have a few more after that, the future conversations. Some of the questions that I feel like, I, statements, I guess, comments and questions I feel like I need to say are, I feel like we need to be thinking about five years out and not just one year out. I know the, the plans of developing around Brookview are sort of in the works, but I, I think, you know, that's only one piece. I know there's developments happening in Lake Elmo. There's development happening in Baytown. There's, there's developments happening in Stillwater. We are a growing community. And so that's why I feel like we need to really take a close look at what the population is doing in the next five years, what we can expect, and what we can expect for enrollment. I, I think to continue saying that we should expect enrollment to decline is just, it's just, that's just, to me, is just crazy. I, I want somebody to prove me wrong, but I just don't agree with that. We're not, we're not declining in enrollment. We're going to be growing, and I think we need to be prepared for that. I think we need more specific updated data on our population projections. And I think we need to have a conversation as a board, what that will mean for enrollment, and what we can really expect in each of our buildings. I am all for adding on to Brookview, if that's what we need. But even in this document, it says, within five years, we probably will have nearly 350 students in the Brookview area, and 150-seat space isn't going to cut it. What are we going to do in five years when there's even more kids, another 200 kids in Brookview? Where are they going to go? And so I want to be thinking about this more long-term, so that we're not caught off guard. And I, I think the information is out there. I think we can find it. I think we can bring it to the table and really look at it and be careful about this. I, we have an empty elementary school sitting here. It's actually, the lights are on, the heat is on, there's, you know, people using the space, about 40 people in that building. It can tolerate 450. I think if we are thoughtful about this, we can fill that building and create space in other buildings for the growth that seems to be clearly happening. that seems to be clearly happening. I am welcome to have that conversation about why I think that that's what's happening. I really want to have that conversation. I don't want to just assume that, you know, enrollment is declining. I just, I disagree with that. The other piece of this for me is, the concerns that have been raised in various different formats about the ALC needs, and what the capacity for that is, and what transitions needs are, and how do we make those programs really ideal? So, those are questions I have. I really want to have those conversations. I also want to respond to what the community has been saying for many, many years, that we need to lower our class sizes. I know that this seems like a crazy thing to say, when we've been presented information that we have a $2.5 million deficit. But I feel like lowering class sizes grows enrollment, because parents want their kids to come to school where there's smaller class sizes. And so, if we grow enrollment, we grow the bottom line. That's how I see it. I know that's really messy, and I know that's really complicated. But those are all the different things that I think play into this whole conversation. It's not just a conversation about the budget this year. It's not just a conversation about whether to add on to Brookview, although those two pieces are really, really important. There's so many more pieces to it, and I want to make sure we take the time to get it right.
Thank you for those comments. I just want to, I wrote this down, because I think you're hitting on something that I asked for at the beginning of this, was providing some direction to our staff as we head into that work session. You asked about enrollment, so you've got some concerns about the numbers. You know, you think it's increasing. Some say it's decreasing. So, let's have a clarification discussion on that. Demographic study, where I am curious as to, when you say that, are, you know, we've got quite a lengthy, lengthy demographic study that we received. Do you want that to come into that meeting on the 10th as well?
I would love to have an update on that, or if we have some other sources we can use. I thought that one of the reasons why we went with TeamWorks is because they could give us live updates. I thought that was one of the benefits of going with them. So, if I'm mistaken, let me know that. But I thought we were going to get some updates from time to time.
Denise, maybe you want to speak to that?
Yeah. TeamWorks, so the last, when it was presented, I believe, to the board was June. And so, you know, they do updates for us, but it isn't week by week. They don't, you know, go
Well, I guess I thought it'd be like quarterly, or half, six months, or something.
And I think June, the end of June is when we got it. So, July, August, September, it's been three months. So, we could ask for another one in September, or I mean, in
Like October, whatever.
A couple more months, and you might see some changes. I think it's important, though, for the board to consider that with the demographic studies that you've had, this is just not an 834 study that's been done that is off. When we look at and compare the studies from Washington County, the city of Woodbury, Lakeview Hospital, Hazel Reinhardt, and now our last TeamWorks study, they all mirror the same thing. So, if we want more demographic information, I'm just not sure where we can get more. That, I think we have it already. So, if you need more time as a board to dig in and understand that, we can certainly do that.
Could I clarify, just a question, just the first statement about, to add on to that. With regard to the current study, I think I alluded to this page, because it's the part that gets confusing with the 1.9 decline. So, the most current demographic study that we have, that 1.9 decline is based off of numbers of all the developments that are active developments. And if, in the demographic study, you go to page 46, it speaks to, there's a graph, there's a table there, it's labeled 10C, where what TeamWorks has done is exactly what you're talking about, is they've said, there are some developments here that we think are reasonable to consider as future developments, but aren't on any plan, official plans right now. And those are expected to, in five years, so this plan goes out to 2022, right? That's when the plan is. That, if you took Afton-Lakeland, Anderson, Brookview, Rutherford, Stonebridge areas, based on the work that they did, the anticipated increase, if you put those in, would be a total of 463 students over those five years, is what they would anticipate, based on, then, you go back to all the different yields like that. And so, that's the, that's the part where there's a line in there that's specific to Brookview. And it shows that the, that what they're thinking, based on what we know, so these, at Brookview, this includes the one area right next to it, that's the farmland right now that you can see. And then, there's up north, northwest, behind the new development, that's currently, we're thinking that's going to be like townhouse condos. So, that's a, those totals are about 900 units total, but they're two different types. So, they bring in two different yields. But just in Brookview, we're looking at, in over five years, now, if it grows out that way, if both of those become active in five years, we would see three, about 395 students right in that area. So, that's how the demographic report works, is the numbers suggest a decline based on what is known. And then, you actually have to go to page 46 to dig in deeper and say, in addition to those numbers, if future developments get reported as active, and they start digging ground, we need to be paying attention to those attendant, current attendance areas to that level, at a minimum.
Right. Because I mean, I'm pretty sure there's some stuff happening around Bayport, Baytown, the Inspiration Neighborhood, I know, is building out. There's, you know, potentially another 100, 115 homes there. I mean, okay, that's not going to be 100 kids, probably, but it could be 40 kids.
So, here's what my learning is on all this. As back, is it really what the conversation we have to have, and why we talk to the city planners, is, really has to do with what types of homes are going out, right? Because the single-level detached townhomes, that's not going to be a kid generator. And even if they were single-family, considered single-family dwellings, in that area, we know historically what the, you know, does it take one house to generate one kid to the system? Does it take two houses, three houses? What does it take? And so, that's what we have to continually use. But that's why we go back to the planners and ask them, has anything changed? Has anything changed? So, my only point to it is, I think the, I don't think that the demographics report we got from TeamWorks is inaccurate. I think maybe, to your point, we just need to have a little deeper conversation, and make sure we're, we know where to look in the report, to see what all the additional contingencies are, that we need to be paying attention to, as we move forward, and watch.
Yes, that's exactly right. Thank you.
Do you feel satisfied with that, Sarah? Okay. And also, the transitions, ALC, I have a question about that, actually. And I, you want to have that as part of the discussion also, Director?
Well, at some point, I don't know. I mean, it just, my point was that it's a lot. There's, there are a lot of things to consider. But yes, I definitely think we need to keep that in mind as well, as we go forward.
And one little adjunct to that, Superintendent Pontrelli, and then George, I'm going to go to you. I just, we, can you speak a little bit to, I think that you are planning to have kind of a report on ALC. So, maybe speak to that. When is that? And do you think we need to move that up, or, for the purposes of this? Or can we wait until, sorry to put you on the spot?
No, I'll let Dr. McDowell, he's working on the ALC study, so I'll let him respond to that. I don't think that we can actually move it up, because we're looking at, we're trying to give you a whole systems view of what that program is, from, you know, how our students are performing, what our retention rate has been, what is the cost, what, you know, those kind of things. So.
Yeah, I would be, I would be, I would be concerned at moving it up any sooner, although, I mean, it's important. But the only information that we would share right now would be historical cost breakdowns, kind of what some of the questions were. What does it, what do these types of programs cost us to operate? And based on historic board conversations, that's not really where we, that's not the sandbox that we operate on, is just the cost of a program. It's the impact of the program, and do we want to expend, even if it costs us more, do we want to expend the money on that, regardless? So, what we're trying to do is put together more, like Superintendent Pontrelli said, more of a comprehensive study, kind of like we did with Special Ed and all that, so we can get an idea of, what's the full spectrum of service? What's, what's happening? What's the retention of kids in that specific program? What's it costing? The whole, as much as the information as we can bring.
Is this along the lines of ALC? Otherwise, I'm going to go to Director Hapner.
It is ALC.
Okay, go ahead.
Something I don't want to lose sight of, particularly as a former high school principal, and I know you were a middle school principal, especially, most ALCs aren't always in the same building. We obviously put them in this building. What I want is some kind of evaluation, whether it comes from staff, parents, or kids, or all of the above. How well has that worked? Has it hurt the program, helped the program? So, sometimes, and I know it's a valuable part of it, finance is extremely important, but also, basically, is the program meeting our expectations or our hopes, all of those sort of things.
And I anticipate us having those answers through surveys and focus group interviews with families, to include the parents, the guardians, the kids, and the teachers, is what I know Dr. Nolan and Mr. Lee are working on with that.
That's great to hear. Thank you. Different or not? Otherwise, I'm going to Director Hapner?
I had, yeah, and then I have a question for you, actually.
Okay. I would like to, at the retreat or work session, whatever we're calling it, hear from, maybe somebody from Kraus-Anderson, or somebody in the, who's going to be looking at the construction, if we build out Brookview. What's the cost of delaying each year that we would put that out? In other words, you know, might we have enough funds at the current time, and if we wait, we aren't going to have enough funds? So, something like that. Then, my other point is to Director Stivlin's comment about class size. You know, it's, it's going to be something that's easy to jump on the bandwagon for. In the document that we were given, if we were to reduce the elementary range by one, and reduce the secondary range by one, now, think about that. You're reducing the range by one. So, instead of a classroom that might go to 29, you're going to be going to 28. Instead of a classroom that might be 24, you're going to 23. That would cost us about $1.4 million to do that. Okay? Think about what, you know, is it, is it going to be, to your point, you know, parents want this, are they going to pay attention if we've gone from 29 to 28, or 25 to 24? I thought one of the school board candidates could point in the forum that they had, you can have a large classroom and, you know, not have problems. And you can have a small classroom and not have problems. Back when I was teaching, the magic number was 18. They said, if you could reduce to 18, and do staff development, so that teachers change their teaching methods, you could really have an impact. But until you could get down to 18, and until you could change teachers' strategies in the classroom, there would not be a significant difference. So, I want us to not necessarily just jump on class size. I know everybody's going to, you know, say, well, the lower the class, the better. I don't believe that's true. Just, we need to be careful when we throw that out there. And especially, reducing the range by one, K-12, would cost us $1.4 million annually.
Thank you, Director Hapner. So, I'm hearing that you want to have, cost of delaying the decision to Brookview, what those implications are at the work session, as well as maybe a further discussion on this class size topic, which
I don't need a discussion on class size. Somebody else can want, can request that. I, I understand, I mean, Sarah asked for it, I guess. So, but, but I, I do not believe that we can afford to lower by the number that would have a significant impact. I don't think we're at the financial position where we could say, we're going to lower by half a dozen kids in those classes of 29, or we're going to take 24 down to 18, and do the requisite professional development. I, it'd be great. I wish we could get down to 15 in every class. We can't afford to do it.
And, you know, just, I'll say this. I think we, I welcome the discussion as well, Director Stivlin. I think where I'm at with that, kind of similar to Director Hapner, is, you take a million dollars, you take a, you do a blanket across the board decrease in class size, and, you know, a class of 40 with a bunch of high flyers that sit there and listen, we're paying for that decrease in class size, and we may not need it. We've got a class of 18, that you could have 10, you know, challenging kids in it. Well, they could benefit from it. So, I guess, for me, you know, I'll say this now, and I'll say it in our retreat, I want to be more creative with it. I want to be more creative for the sake of our taxpayers, for our teachers, and for our families. I think our community deserves that, and I'd like to have a more creative discussion. So, with that, you were, you were wanting to
Yeah, I just have some questions for you, actually. Just clarifying questions first. I know you wanted to keep this to an hour tonight. Are you watching?
I am watching. Thank you for saying that. I was thinking maybe 8:30. But it was, and it is anywhere between 8:20 and 8:30.
So, and I know you had questions, so I want to make sure you can get
I'm kind of getting them in there. So, thanks, Shelley.
But, I want, so is the retreat about budget and facilities, or are we just looking at the budget at the retreat?
I think what, Denise, and you can let me know if my interpretation of our discussion is, if I'm off on that. But I think what we wanted to do is, give the board, I think, you know, the, all of us collectively have heard from our community members, as well as amongst each other, that we have a lot of questions, and we want a lot of transparent discussion. And we want the time to have that discussion, and not be rushed, not be rushed to certain decisions. We have decisions we have to make, period. That is our job as elected officials. So, the, the point here was, get the ball rolling for an hour. Let's not fall asleep at the table. Let's make sure that we're fresh, and providing productive feedback. And for our retreat, just kind of delve in deeper where we need to.
Okay. So, I just want to be, I think we need to be careful, that we're not trying to talk about too much, because I think we can spin our wheels. When we're trying to talk about facility and budget, maybe we need to focus more on one, probably budget. I think that's the more, one that's a little more pressing. And then, I'd love if we could figure out the format that we want to do that in, so we know how we're going to go into the retreat.
Well, the first, the first stressor was just getting the date. So, we got that. And then, we'll move on to the format of that. Denise, if you want to speak to that?
Sure. We just, we have three topics so far. So, for four hours, we were thinking, one, on building in facilities, because I do think we need to keep the conversation moving for Brookview. That is a real timeline. If you, you know, decide as a board to have that facility ready by 2020, there's, we're pushing it with December. So, I think we need to keep that conversation going. I know the Legislative Working Group wanted some time to discuss. We have an invite ready to share with our legislative representatives and candidates, that we wanted to get out. And I know Director Patachek was maybe going to share some of that information this evening. And then, the bulk of it was to talk about finance, because again, we don't have a lot of time. They are, they are tough decisions. And it's, we've talked a lot about, when is the time to make the decisions to impact the budget? August to December.
Thank you. Director Hovland?
Yes. I think one thing you have to be really careful about when you talk class size. You can deal with class size if they're all students with 120 IQ, and all speak English, and don't have any problems with behavioral problems, or anything like that. Class size, in all years that I was a principal and a teacher, you could have, you could have a class of 35 in a gifted math class. But the, I have four schools left to visit. But the ones I've been to, I saw many, many groups where four students were, were too many. So, you have to be kind of, you have to look at your, your audience that you're dealing with, to see what, what will maximize their learning potential. I just don't like the word "class size," because it, if it, I couldn't believe the changes that I saw in the schools that I visited, and the tremendous job that some of these people are doing. There were students at Lake Elmo and Little Lake, that the teachers, I don't know how they did it every day, and the classes were very small. But you want, you want to graduate students But you want, you want to graduate students who can compete and make it in the world market that they're going to be in. It's different than when we all went to school. The needs are different, and I think to hook it all onto class size would be a mistake, because for some, as I said, 30 is fine, but for most, 25 or 20. But for some of the students that I've seen in the schools, five is too many. We want to graduate students that can compete in the world that you and I can't even imagine at this point. So I'd like to just say that it's not the same. The world that these students are in now is different than the ones that we all went to school in. So I want to look at the total picture, not just numbers.
Thank you, Don. You said a lot better than I did. Thank you very much. Director...
Let Paula go.
Paula, Director Olakland.
So one thing I wanted to propose to the board for our retreat is, I know Superintendent Huntrelli and her team came up with a list of possible budget reduction options, and as I hear the board with some of their own ideas, I really would like to hear the board's recommendations. You know, I agree with Chair Pelletier's assessment that we've been having these conversations now for how many months? We know that our spending is exceeding what is coming in, therefore yielding a deficit. It's really simple math, we've known this for months, we've, and I feel like we still have not been talking about it. We don't want to take, and we've made some decisions recently where we're going to increase the revenue a little bit, but it's not going to be enough. And so, and then I think to, you know, then talk about, oh, let's add this, or let's do this, without, I hope that, all this to say is, I hope the retreat is really having an honest conversation about where we are going to find $2.5 million, and where it's going to have the least, there's no such thing, I don't think, as no impact to our students, because it's a system, and the ecosystem always has impact to our students, but what is the thing that's going to mitigate the least amount of harm, if you will, to our students coming up with $2.5 million? And I know that our board is very resourceful, very innovative, loves to do their own research, and maybe they can come up with some ideas of what potential reductions that they would like us to talk about.
Okay. Thank you, Director Olakland. I completely agree with that. That should be front and foremost in our discussion. Director Pearson, did you ever hand up in on Director Patachek, or which one?
He can go.
Okay.
Okay. Before we leave the topic of class size, because I think it, as a topic, that's a good one, and Mr. Hovland, I agree a lot with what you've said, and Mr. Hapner touched on it as well, and that's the makeup of the class is very important. When you work just with ranges, and I can understand sometimes you have to do that with a centralized system, range becomes very important. If I had a million dollars and I wanted to use that to address class size, I wouldn't work on the range, because as George pointed out, it appears to be minimal results. What I think you should do, and I've suggested that, Jennifer, I mailed you an email and copied Denise on as well, and I think in practice, sometimes you have to look at the makeup of the class, as Mr. Hovland pointed out. So if you have X number of kids are English language learners, or you have X number of kids who are special needs students, you may have to design that strategy or that attack on class size differently. Now, the complexity is when you, when you talk about equity, that hits equity, because some kids have higher needs, and as a result, the ratios are stronger. But we know even from past practices that certain schools have had problems because there were heavy concentrations of needy kids. And so, yes, you're attacking class size, but not purely through ranges. Sometimes it's through the needs or the composition of an individual building, or sometimes it's the individual needs of specific classrooms.
Thank you for that. I could not agree more. Director Patachek, great comments, you know, that, and, you know, my struggle is, you know, we're in a deficit situation right now, so that, you know, has to play foremost in our minds, getting the job done, and we should really have future conversations with regards to the class sizes as well, and how we look at those creatively.
Chair Pelletier, just one resource for, to remind the board, if you go back to the budget discussion on the cost implications of reducing class size from April 18th, if you look at Slide 13, it has not only the cost, but just a reminder that even when you reduce the range, or when you're looking at the ratio, it doesn't impact all buildings. It could be two buildings that you're reducing it, it could be four buildings, so please look back at your April 18th discussion, and for the people in the audience and community to be able to do that also, because I think it really emphasizes what you're all trying to say about the class size. It's the cost, and then really, what is the impact?
Thank you. Director Pearson.
Thank you. I think just to, what Director Olakland was saying, I think that's why I was asking questions about the format, because I want us to make sure that we get to a place where we are looking at things that we think need to be cut. I think, so that's one, I want us to make sure that we can have the discussion. So how we want to do that is important, whether we're going to do post-its and vote, or whatever we're going to do, so I want to make sure we have that decided before we get there, so we don't spend time trying to decide what we're going to do. And then, second, that's why I asked a lot of five-year questions, and I really, I know it's work, but I'd really like to see those at the retreat, so that we can see kind of our trending, and where we've maybe bubbled and need to cut back, and things like that. So that's why those questions were there.
So five-year questions, and so is your thought process that the, that that is impacting our budget shortfalls? Is that what you're getting at with that, or I'm just...
By looking at the five years, just to see where we've maybe gone up in some areas faster than other areas, and maybe that will be flags of places that we can cut back.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Are we going to finish five minutes earlier, or do we have any? Director Olakland?
I also just wanted to add, I think someone, one of the speakers mentioned it earlier, I would invite people to go back to the presentation that Superintendent Huntrelli made, she and her team, when they first rolled out the bold proposal, and it was stated very clearly there, and many times thereafter, that the school consolidation would not be the silver bullet to solving our ongoing financial problems. With our cross-subsidy sitting around $8 million a year that comes out of our general fund, with the lack of state funding, and the compounded loss of not keeping up with inflation, our contracts, the amount of what our, our community is paying, while very generous, is not perhaps meeting what our students need and what we would like to provide for them. So I just want to, wanted to address that, because I think the implication was made that somehow Bold was going to, all of a sudden, erase our financial woes, and that we wouldn't have to worry about finances anymore, and I just want it to be on the record that, it was stated very clearly that you had made it clear that it was not going to be the silver bullet, and we had to look really closely at our finances going forward.
Thank you. So, can you clarify for me, Director Olakland, you made a statement there, would you like us to kind of...
No, I just wanted to clear that, because I felt like there was an implication that, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Staff, do you feel that you have a place to start from us, and know that we can obviously continue to communicate prior to that? Do you feel that you've got a decent place to start?
Well, I think one of the questions we would ask is the list that we gave you to look at for budget considerations, those are, you know, is the direction then that you want deeper and cost savings for each of those areas? Are there additional areas? And then I think we might, Director Pearson, with some of your questions, need more clarification, because if we know kind of what the real question, even how you explained it here now, you know, in more clarity, that can help us maybe pull information that would be better.
I tried to be really clear in what I asked, so I think where there's not clarity, maybe you could ask me.
Yeah, right, we will. Okay. Thank you.
I think just one, oh, excuse me.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead. One area to consider, and I think it was one of my questions about board expenditures, I think that we have a board budget of $200,000. To me, that seems a bit excessive, or I know that we do have some...
$200,000?
$197,000, did I see?
That doesn't sound right.
I thought from the...
That was one of the questions.
So I think that's, you know, our salaries alone is, you know, I think we could put on the table, if we're talking about, you know, really ways that we can, we can be a little more resourceful, maybe looking at some of our memberships. What is something that, how can we, if we're going to model kind of this financial and fiscal responsibility, what are the ways that we, as a board, can tighten our belts as well?
That is, I would agree that I'd like to see more detail with that, if you have that, and could bring more detail around what's, what do we, I know there's the salaries, and there's our MSBA conventions, but if we can look at the whole thing.
Yeah, I guess I would say, just in general, the list that you provided for us in this packet, before I would be able to make a decision on anything, I would need more information about what exactly those costs are, what exactly are we talking about cutting? I mean, I think just a little bit more information would be good. I think our point was, if there are any that you, one of the pieces on there is interventions, elementary interventions for math and reading, if that would be something that you, as a board, would say, no, absolutely not, we need those for all kids, we don't want to touch that area, then we wouldn't do that. But we can go back, we actually have many of the numbers anyway, so.
If it's something we're going to entertain, we just, we're going to need to know kind of a direction so that we can create a process.
Okay.
The caution always is, and I think, I understand you have the same concern, is it's always a difficult conversation, and you don't want to get a cart out before the horse, if the cart isn't something you're going to consider, because it inevitably is going to impact someone somewhere, and so we just need to make sure we're giving ourselves enough leeway in terms of time to have a process that we can do it in such a way that we aren't accidentally getting carts out before the horse.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just say for me, the most important items to fight for are the things that are directly impacting our students. And, you know, whether it be, you know, I've heard nothing but so many positive things from our staff, that they, they love some of these new implemented programs, and I have just heard so many positive things about it. So I guess for me, that is the kind of thing that I want to fight for, some of these areas that just are directly improving student achievement. So that is my off-the-table discussion, I guess, but we can continue to have the discussion at the work session, I'm just laying out what my top.
Sure. Director Pelletier, what might even be helpful, or Chair Pelletier, I'm sorry, for the group is, maybe you have your finance subcommittee develops what they want that process to be. We're happy to help facilitate and have that conversation. There are as many different processes to go through this as you have, that you can imagine, and so what I wouldn't want us to do is to develop what we think would be appropriate, and then have you disagree with it. So if your finance subgroup would like to develop that, we are here to support you.
So are you saying develop the process as you want for the work session? So now, direction-wise, are we not going to, you're not looking for these specific items at this point?
Well, yeah.
Can you, can you, do you want more?
I think we need to know, I think we need to know what you would like us to do. Would you like us to, if we would do something like that, would it be more helpful for us to come to the finance working group and kind of lay out, here's what our thoughts are on how to do it, and then go from there, and then provide specifics?
I'm open to anyone's opinion on this, so please feel free to comment. Director Pearson, I think I heard you, saw your hand up.
I was just going to mention, I don't, as much as I think there are going to be things that we say are off the table, I think we have to look at everything at this point, which I know is more work for staff, but I just think...
I don't think that'll be a problem, that was when we, that the list that we gave to you is a result of just doing that. Those are really the big areas, right? I mean, they're the big, general areas where we would say, there's pieces, there's up to that amount in that area is probably what we can consider if we needed to reduce by. So then it is, the next question is, do you want a list of all the sub-things that make up that area, full well knowing that once you put those out, that those are areas that, those are things that we're considering, and that's, I think, why Superintendent Huntrelli listed. Are there areas you don't want us to put out there?
Okay, Director Hapner?
One of the areas on there, I think, had something to do with staff development and professional development. And as I read that, I thought, well, you've used the comment before, we spend well beyond the 2%. Well, I'd like to know personally, okay, here's how the 2% is spent, here beyond the 2% is where we're spending it. So we might say, you know what, we need to get back to 2%. It's great that we're spending 3.5 or whatever, but, I mean, so that's the kind of specifics I would like for that one broad area. I think another one was move middle school athletics to community ed. Well, what's the impact, you know, of doing, yeah, it can be X amount of dollars, but what else goes into that? I mean, if you took everything that you had on that list and gave us more specifics, I got to believe that'd fill up an 8 to 12 o'clock meeting and discussion, so I don't know how many other things we're going to be able to pack on that list, but that's a huge topic.
So the finance committee can look at this, consider a process, feel free to communicate. We're all working together on this, we all want to, we all want what's best, and we have to work together to get there. I'm going to close this out soon, so last comments here, Director Patachek.
First of all, it's nice and easier when you're adding programs or these kinds of things. It's very painful to go in the other direction. But I think what might be useful, I'm going to make one suggestion to add to the list, and I don't know if it's in there or not, and that would be to freeze out of state travel and attendance at conferences. And I'm not talking long-term, but I'm saying for this particular shortfall, what would be the impact of that? And I realize in some of those are maybe contractual obligations you have to fulfill as a district, but I'd like to know, that enters somewhat in the range that George was talking about, when you go beyond the 2%, because sometimes it's a case of where what's convenient, what's nice, and then for this moment in time, what we can't afford. But also, what I'd like to suggest for the process, if there are additional suggestions that other board members have, that someone be receiving those, whether it's, Kristen might be a good source of those, to say, hey, take a look at this, because I think, Bob, as you mentioned, and I think it's real, as soon as you mention an item, people start saying, that's my turf, I got to protect that. And for some people, you're going to raise their stress level. I agree with our chair that an area that's sacred to me is the classroom, so if you're going to make cuts, the further you make it from the classroom, the better. But again, I think where the disagreement comes among board members or the people who will make the final decision is what's most important, and what are you getting to the bone, and what are you getting to the fat, and they differ. I don't think we have much fat. Go ahead.
No, and just as you're thinking of things, and because you brought up the out-of-state travel, we can, that's an easy one to just, as you're thinking about other stuff, that goes into professional development, so it's a different conversation to say we're going to eliminate doing something, unless what we're saying is we're going to reduce the amount of dollars out of the budget that that something is taken out of and put that back into the general fund, right?
Yeah, and I'm open to all those.
Yeah, and I'm only picking on the out-of-state, because that, it's just easy because you brought up, but for any of the areas, it's not about what we do or don't do, it's about, if you don't do it, is that money now not going to be a part of that budget area, and we're going to put that back into something that we use for something else.
And that's the up to 500K number here, the professional development?
Yeah, if you were talking professional development, just to point it out, it's different to say, we're not going to do this anymore, but if you... different to say, "We're not going to do this anymore," but if you still keep 500,000 in there, it doesn't matter.
Right. Got it. Director Pearson?
Which is a great point, and thank you for that. And I think, to that point, I think is exactly why, to, what Director Hapner was saying, to have it broken down more, so we can see, would be good. So, I think as you're going through those areas, so that we can see, here's out-of-state travel, here's exactly how much we spend, here's how much we spend on all the other areas, I think would be great.
All right. Anyone else here? Director Hoheisel, did you have a question?
I have no question. Just a, a note that we do actually have a committee meeting scheduled for, I believe, next Wednesday. So, any work that can be done by the board to get to that group by Wednesday morning would be fantastic.
Thank you very much for that. You're right.
That was my question. Do we have time on the agenda, do you think, Director Hoheisel, given the other things that we need to discuss that day?
I, given the other, I would say it is, it is, the board members, what, their availability is what's, what will drive.
Okay.
I, we are, I am open to continue. It would be your availability to do so.
Okay, so I'll send out an email to the other finance working group, committee members? Okay.
So, this is Wednesday?
Wednesday, yeah, next Wednesday.
All right, we are going to move on. All right. Thank you all. That was a really good discussion. We are on to action items. Action item 11, school board meeting calendar, 2018, location, weekday. We have had two meetings on this, where we've discussed this topic. At the last meeting, if you recall, I, I pushed this off, because I, we have to figure out the location action item prior to the, the weekday. So, as you know, this has been talked about for a long time, moving to Oak Park. And, and secondarily, the discussion about possibly moving the meetings to Monday. I did want to quickly say, so if we just go, say, we go from now until, or October, you know, start October on a Monday, October 8th, through the end of the year, the December Mondays would be the 3rd and the 17th. And as...
We only have one meeting in December, don't we?
We have to have two.
Because of the way we've changed our, the way we pay bills, we need to approve bills twice a month.
So, are we adding a meeting, no matter what, to December?
Mm-hmm. You're going to have to have two each month.
We have to have two. And the reason we have to vote on this tonight again is because we have to post the truth in taxation meeting by October the 1st. So, I am, is that correct? October 1?
Yeah, I need to submit it tomorrow morning.
Submit it. So, let's, we need to get her done. So, I am looking for, I would, I would appreciate just first, the location action as well, and then we can move on to weekday from there. So, I'm ready to entertain a motion. Director Alakman?
I'll make a motion that we move the remainder of our board members from, or, excuse me, board members, board meetings to Oak Park Elementary in the new space, that I think we've all had a chance to tour. I think it's set up nicely. I think it's going to save us some money, and I think it's more accessible to the public.
Okay. I'm wondering if we should take a break and wait for Director Stivlin to get back, or?
We might need a five-minute recess.
Let's, okay. We're going to do a five-minute recess. Thank you. All right, we are back. We were in, in the process of a motion for Director Alakman.
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we, excuse me, we move the remainder of the school board meetings to Oak Park Elementary. I think we've all had a chance to tour that space, and it's, I think it's well-equipped and well, well-suited for our needs. It's, I feel it's much more accessible to the public, certainly holds, I think it's greater capacity. And on top of that, it will save us some money. So, I think all, all benefits to consider, to make a favorable motion, or, excuse me, vote.
Thank you. Could I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Director Hapner. Any questions, Director Patachik?
Yes, I am in favor of moving to Oak Park Media Center. I'm not so sure about the second part of that, is saving money. In the executive summary that we received tonight on page 12, it talks about equipping that room and remodeling it for uses aboard, meeting room cost 80,000, $83,000. That's a lot of money. And my point is, I think it's going to take a long time to regroup that. But regardless, I think the architecture, I've spoken to before, is more conducive for a boardroom for a lot of reasons.
I appreciate that. I think one of the things that's important, too, is the carpeting is part of that, and a large, you've been in there and seen how large a room of that. The carpeting expense from long-term facilities, we would have done regardless to keep that building up, so that's something to consider.
Thank you. Director Haveland?
I'm, I'm totally in favor of moving it. I, I think it's unfair for you to have to look up at us. We're not your bosses. We work for you. So, I, I think all being at the same level is just a good thing to do.
Thank you. Director Stivlin?
So, I just wanted to kind of, I kind of concur with, with Director Patachik. I did ask about what the cost of this space is, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, what we were told is that this is around $4,000 a year to use this space. And that's just for the audiovisual equipment and whatnot. I think the city of Stillwater is letting us use this space free of charge, which is a wonderful partnership that we have with them. And that, so I just want to make sure I show appreciation for that. I, I don't have a problem with the Oak Park space, but I think the, the number that we were given in the same email was that the audiovisual equipment, the, the recording equipment and the, you know, to get it all set up for us to have our meetings is $49,000. And, you know, so we'll, we'll, we'll recoup that, I guess, in about 10 years, if that's the case. And I guess I'm a little bit concerned with how this all kind of came about, because I, I just don't, I don't think this ever came before the board, before we actually made the decision to move over there, as an actual decision to, to do that. I feel like we should have come before the board, had the discussion, decided to do it, and then go ahead and spend the money. So, I'm just going to say that. I, I am, I am actually opposed to moving over there, because I think we made a decision in January of when to have our meetings, where to have our meetings, and what day of the week to have our meetings. And I am in favor of keeping it the same until the end of this year, because I don't want to confuse the public at a time when, you know, people do want to pay attention to what's happening in our district. I am open to the idea of moving at the end of the year, so, starting in January. I think that that would be fine. I'd be open to having the conversation about making the change to the date, if you want to make a change to the format or whatever. I think we can have that conversation then. But at least for me, I would rather just stay here until the end of the year, because I don't want to confuse the public.
Okay. Can I ask a, just a clarifying question, a comment, and then a question? The comment is, with regards to the equipment, we have a problem in this district where we, we do not provide access to our meetings to a wide, a growing population, and it, it bothers me on many levels. We, this, this new equipment, Denise, if you could speak to that, from what I have asked and think I understand, it will provide closed captioning opportunity for some of our families who cannot access our meetings. So, if you could speak to that, and I guess I would counter with, I, I really feel that this has been talked about for a long time, so it's not a surprise to me. I respect your, your thinking, your opinion, of course. I, I disagree with it, but I, I did really want to ask you, how long has, how long have we, you know, kind of been discussing, when did this start? And then, number two, can you let me know if I'm wrong about the equipment and the opportunity for, for the closed captioning?
Yeah. Can I just clarify before you answer? I understand that we've been talking about the idea of moving. I'm talking about the expenditure of $49,000 before, you know, we made a decision as a board. Like, we should have made this decision we're making now, first, and then gone through the process. To me, it's just, it's kind of a logistical thing, I guess, but...
Denise, could you?
I totally respect your point, again, but that's just where I'm...
Could you, could you maybe speak to Director Stivlin's concern?
Sure. I think that I've heard from members of this board since I first came, that this space was not conducive to having conversations with the public, and it was more like you're on a pulpit looking down. And so, I don't know that there's anyone I haven't heard. Sarah, we probably have never had the conversation, but it started probably in 2015. And so, the, the question was, where can we have our board meetings within our space? Oak Park was the logical. I agree, you know, using money to put in the video and the recording and those kind of things with the board meeting, for the board meetings is a cost. Yes, it will come back within 10 years. To your point, Director, Chair Pelletier, the things that you're talking about, John Perry, and actually, he just left, so it would have been helpful to have this right before, but I hope I don't speak out of turn, we have capability of looking at doing translation. He's working on that.
Okay, great.
Closed caption is something else. He's in the process of that, so I can't give you specifics of where we are. But I also know that there are, he described for hearing impaired also, there are a wire that goes around your neck to help amplify for hearing aids and that kind of thing. Those are all things that he's looking at to be able to use in that space.
All right, thank you. Director Pearson?
Thank you. Just a note, I think, to try to clarify a little bit, because I feel the same way. It's been talked about a lot, but I think because it has to do with us, it would have been better to be a board decision. I think that's where some of that comes from. But then, I have two questions. Are we going to not do iLegislate? Is that part of the plan with going over there?
I'll let Chris speak to that.
In this facility, we use Granicus, which has the iLegislate feature to it, and we would be moving over and using, really YouTube allows us to get all the functionality that we're talking about with the translation and some of those different pieces. So, you would no longer have the Granicus account, which is where that savings comes from, of that $4,000 that you mentioned, Sarah. So, we would have a different format that we've used. If you go to the website right now, you see the board meeting materials, and that's where people can access all that information. So, they'll still have access to all the same information. It just won't be through that iLegislate tool that you're used to.
Okay. And then, my second question is related to that, so maybe you're the best one to answer. How will it change? Because I think I heard it'll change. Right now, it's streamed live. Is that, in certain places, can you explain where it's going to be, what's going to change with how people can watch the meeting?
It will still be streamed live, but it'll be through YouTube. So, essentially, people will still go to our website. They'll still click a link, and they'll be able to watch it live. It'll be archived there as well. It will be a slightly different format than what you're used to seeing it in, if that makes sense.
And so, will it not be on Valley Access at the same time, or will it also be?
It will. It will still be broadcast on Valley Access as well.
So, basically, it won't change for people. It's just what website they're watching it from. Everything will be the same. Okay?
Yep. All right.
Question on the motion?
Yep.
I think the motion talks about where. It doesn't talk about the day of the week.
Correct. That's, that'll be the next motion.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we, we can call the vote. All those in favor, do we get a second? Yes, George Hapner. All those in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? One opposition, and motion carries six to one. Thank you. Now, we are looking for a secondary motion with regards to moving the day of the week.
I have a motion.
Okay, go ahead. All right, Director?
I'm looking at the schedule here till January 3rd, and what I would request is we leave those dates as is. And then, at the January 3rd meeting, we would look at the future of whether it would change to a different day of the week, or even, yeah, that, to me, that would make the most sense.
Okay, so, so then, are you, are you, are you planning, okay, so is your motion then? What is your motion? And I'm, I'm with you on that, but...
My motion is, the, the dates that are presently on the meeting calendar would stay the same. For example, the September 27th meeting is obviously tonight. The next meeting is October 11th. After that, October 25th, November 8th, November 29th, December 13th, and then January 3rd.
So, your motion is to keep the meetings on Thursday nights until the January 3rd, 2019, meeting. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, could I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Director Stivlin. Any questions?
I, I just have a clarifying question.
Yep.
Is the assumption, then, that we will move to Mondays, or we will decide at that January 3rd meeting?
I believe, well, correct me if I'm wrong, but my interpretation is that, is that we will have another discussion with an action item on January 3rd, again, to discuss moving that or not.
That's what I understood.
Sorry, can I just?
Go ahead.
Don't usually list plan, we finalize our schedule at that first planning orient, organizational meeting. Anyway, so that would be the appropriate time to decide.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so, does everyone understand the motion? So, the motion is to keep it on Thursday nights. Okay, all those in favor of?
I think Director Alakman had a...
Director Alakman, go ahead, sorry.
So, I apologize, because I think I misplaced my notes about the amount of conflicts in terms of different activities on a Monday versus a Thursday. And I, I understand that, you know, it will be changed for the, for the public, but I'm also very sensitive to the fact that our students, and what I heard them say, is that Thursday nights are difficult, particularly since a lot of the tests do fall on a Friday, and anecdotally, that's what I've heard as well. And I, I, I think of what is really going to be best for, for our students, not necessarily what we want, or what we think will be the most, you know, convenient for us. So, particularly, you know, again, with the, with the events and, concerts and, and games, if I remember, and like I said, I, I apologize, I don't know where I put it, but I think that the data bore out that it was, I mean, it was not even close, that there were potentially, or, excuse me, far more conflicts on a Thursday night than there, than there was on a Monday night, for both parents and students and community members.
I believe it was 87, something like 87 to 13. So, it, it's a, it is a dramatic difference. The days of the week are, it is dramatic, definitely. Director Pearson?
And I think I would just say to that, I don't think, I don't think everybody's arguing that we shouldn't change ever. I think it's just finishing out the year with these six meetings, as we had them already posted.
Okay, I'm, we're going to call the vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's four. Those opposed, raise your hand, signify by saying aye. Two? Okay, so the motion car, did you, were you?
The twos on the six.
Director Haveland, what was your vote? Did you vote?
My first time.
Okay.
You voted four.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so we're on a five to two, so the motion carries. So, we are going to stay with Thursday nights. So, for the purposes of what you have to do tomorrow for truth in taxation, and we will reassess.
A different location.
And a different location. And we will reassess at the January 13, or, I'm sorry, 3rd meeting, 2019.
Can you talk about the second meeting in December?
Right. When that's going to be? Do we know?
Uh...
Currently scheduled for the 13th.
Right. Were we, were we thinking the 6th and 20th, Denise and Barb, for the, for the Thursdays in December? Was that, given the...
For dispersals. Typically, what we do is have one meeting in December.
We have to have two.
We, since we've changed our, the way we pay, to be able to pay...
Overdue bills.
People, right, the overdue piece, because we don't do it ahead of time, they already somehow will have waited two weeks. So, for vendors to have them wait a month is probably a lot.
Can I?
Go ahead. Director Pearson?
Thank you. I wonder if, do we have anything in the works, or likely in the works, that we'll have another retreat or something else in December, that we could just tag it onto that and do a quick five-minute, basically, it's a five-minute thing, right, that we have to do past dispersments? So, is that an option, opposed to having a full meeting?
It is an option, but the one thing that I would request is, as we're trying to create check cycles, if it's waiting until...
check cycles, if it's waiting until a meeting might appear, that, you know, we, vendors rely on those payments, and to not know in advance that there's going to be, that this time, or even employees, for that matter, that there's, it's going to be this time that you're going to, and you can anticipate a check. The sooner, the better that that date is set, because the more flexible it is, it's, it doesn't help with people getting paid.
Okay.
So, so then, the options would be the December 6th and the 20th, or the 13th and the 27th? Is that correct? Director Hefner?
27th is during...
Break. Is it...
Well, if we have a meeting on the 13th, and then, we just, like, would come on the 20th at 8:00, do our quick shindig, the way we've done sometimes, and have the thing done by 8:15, isn't that possible?
I mean, we don't need a full-blown meeting. If we've just had one, right?
And you're gonna have another one on the 3rd.
Yeah. I mean, the meeting before is November 29th. That's still only two weeks apart, and then, the following one will be January 3rd, so that's really only two weeks apart, too. So, how is this different than any other month?
But it's, when you think of a check cycle, it's three weeks. So, Sarah, if you were to think the cutoff, because you received that information the Friday before, which is, what, the 8th? When we're not, essentially, that, if vouchers aren't, or invoices aren't in the system by December 8th, they don't have a shot of getting paid until January, which is, again, it's just the timing of when the check cutoff is, and when the board actually approves. So, it's, it is longer.
Right. Yep, I get that. Okay.
So, George, what's the recommendation?
Well, mine would be, unless, you know, Kristin or Denise could say this wouldn't work, but I would say, have the meeting that's currently scheduled on December 13th, and then, meet on the 20th to just do what you said you need to do, and have us get there and leave at 8:15.
We could...
8:00 AM.
8:00 AM.
8:00 AM.
8:00 AM, yeah.
We could have, we could really make it worth our while and have a policy discussion, too.
Yeah.
You'd have to get Policy Working Group okay, and I think you couldn't.
Think at a time.
One can ask. Okay. I just, I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page with this. So, so we are...
So, let's keep the schedule.
We're gonna continue.
Let's talk about having a meeting on the 20th.
So, the 13th will be as-is, and then, we're gonna have a meeting on the 20th at 8:00 in the morning to get the, this portion of it taken care of.
That works.
Good? All right. Make a motion, a second, and a vote. I can add that to the calendar for tomorrow.
So moved.
Second. Please raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Next action item is certify the 2018 levy payable, 2019. Ms. Holheisel, please.
Lead Chair Pelletier, Superintendent Pontrelli, School Board members. In the, tonight's presentation, and you will see this in December, is always a little bit challenging to read on the screen. We saw what numbers look like as they get presented on this version. And so, I'm going to respectfully request those in the audience behind me, either look on, on your electronic device at what's posted for this, the school board agenda, or we do have handouts, and those at home, hopefully, you're able to pull those up as well. Because, again, to be able to look at the screen is just, there's just an awful lot of numbers, and they're very, very small, and, and that's recognized. Unfortunately, there's kind, there's no way around it. So, my apologies for that. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to provide an overview on the proposed preliminary property tax levy for PAY 19, which, again, is for, would be for dollars for the 1920 school year, and review significant changes from where the levy was a year ago. This is our, I would say, our first, we've had conversations through the spring as far as what, what is the board interested in levying for, what are they not? You've taken a vote, but I'd say, process as a whole statewide, this is the first formal component to certifying the levy. So, tonight, you'll be looking at, do we certify the maximum, which allows for the greatest flexibility, or do we choose a dollar amount as the levy is presented? And then, what happens at the Truth and Taxation meeting in December? And now, we do know it's going to be December 13th, and it will be at Oak Park, that, that will be a full presentation, input from the public, and the board at that time, if you were to certify the maximum tonight, the board at that time can choose to under levy and make adjustments to the levy. After tonight, and this is why I say our information is tomorrow, because September 30th happens to fall on Sunday, we provide information to the county with the date of the meeting, and we will be discussing the budget. And then, mid-November, what comes out of tonight's meeting, is mid-November, our taxpayers will be issued proposed property tax notices, and the information that's presented tonight will be moved forward onto there, and that's where our taxpayers will see what could possibly happen to their taxpayer, their taxes for calendar year 19. And here is the, the series of slides where the, the challenge is the numbers to read. And so, I'm going to do the best I can, and please ask questions as you see fit, as far as the numbers before you. Breaking this out into different categories, there's four slides, the general fund and how we levy, the general fund, community services levy, debt levy, and then, we provided as, there used to be OPEB, and we provided as totals. When looking at the general fund levy, there are changes to the operating referendum voter-approved category, and the levy change from a year ago is approximately $1.2 million greater. And what that makes up is, we have had, there is an inflationary factor that is built into what the voters approved back in 2013, and it's about 2% this year. So, whatever our formula was a year ago of voter approval, it goes up by 2%. And so, $400-plus thousand is part, that inflationary increase is just part of what we now levy, and that is included as budgets move forward, because we know there's a, there's an inflationary factor that's approved already, and so, that moves forward as we project budgets. There's another additional $300-plus thousand, and you, in total, it equals about seven for the very first line item, $700,000. The other $300,000 is the change in students. And to Director Stivlin's point, early on in the evening, you know, when do the numbers hit the levy cycle? And a levy is, is a snapshot in time, that it's information that we have in the summer, it gets entered, that's the way it is, and then, the following year, it provides cleanup. So, there is over $300,000 that we have additional for student counts that isn't part of, of, wasn't part of the budget moving forward. And then, there's about $400,000 plus in adjustments. And those adjustments, like I say, those are the cleanups. Those are the things that happen the year after, once the numbers are known. So, that is truly the operating referendum component of our levy. Then, we move...
Yes. I'm sorry to interrupt. Director Stivlin would like to ask questions.
Sure.
I'm sorry. If I remember what you said earlier, is that the student count that that's, that this is going off of is, was put in for July?
It was put in, the numbers, when I enter, all the levy information that I enter in is done July or very early part of August.
So, do you know what, how many that was? How many students? And are we on? I mean, are, was the projection the same as what we are? Generally speaking, we had a presentation last week that we have, like, quite a few new kids this year.
Well, and to say we're on, it gets translated into pupil units. And pupil units come with weights, and it comes with the October number and how many kids we lose, and so, I, it's, I can't really say that, there's nothing that's out of the ordinary, you know, kind of back to the original presentation on the first day enrollment. We're looking good. We typically lose 60 to 100. I can't imagine we're going to be less than what I entered into in July, will probably be more favorable, but I couldn't tell you exactly what that is.
I guess that's what I'm trying to get at. I'm being kind of Pollyanna. Is it possible that number is gonna go up when we actually get the actual final tally?
Well...
You know what I'm saying?
Yes. And...
I'm being hopeful.
Appreciate the optimism. But, and what happens is, with the, with the levy snapshot, it essentially is, I mean, at least as far as the students go, it's looking in a five-year window. It's three years removed, and it's, well, it's 18, 19, 19, 20, and 2021 moving forward, and then, it's capturing 15, 16, 16, 17, and 17, 18. And so, it's combining, it's adjusting to get to actual for the prior years, and then, it's basing the levy on estimates for the current and future years.
Okay.
And so, when all of this is done, and it's based, some categories of our levy are based on, not many, it's very small now, based on resident students. Our operating isn't based on that, but there are categorical components in the levy that are resident students. Some are based on, you know, the kids that actually walk through the door. And then, it's the waiting. So, again, I appreciate the view of, you know, it could be better, and I would say, yes. But looking back, are we gonna, is last year, was last year off to the negative, and then that, you know, come a year forward, that'll be a negative adjustment, so...
Okay. I understand what you're saying.
Careful, yes, but, again, it's a year from now, another year will get cleaned up, we're projecting another year out, and the, kind of the goal, at least, that I view the levy, and, and it's great to say, will we have increased revenue? But, back to the mantra, or the situation that we've been living under, is keep the levy neutral, and with adjustments, we've been pretty steady as far as keeping the levy neutral. So, there's always adjustments, but there's not big swings of holy buckets, we miss that number, good or bad, by a long shot. But I completely understand what you're saying. I would think it's entirely possible, based on the estimates that were entered into in July.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
And then, I'm just gonna go down and hit a few points of things that, in, you know, if you see other significant items, please feel free to ask me. Things that have...
Excuse me. Would you like us to wait until you're done, or ask questions throughout? What would be easiest for you for the purpose of the presentation?
It is entirely up to Madam Chair.
Okay. So, I'm, do you have a quick one?
It is a quick one, and it's just a clarification, because there's so many numbers. So, we're looking at total from 18 to 19 of about $2 million increase. Is that correct, bottom line?
General fund?
Correct.
I, but I will say, and this is the piece with the levy, careful that you don't just break it out by general, community, and debt, because, again, it's the, what the taxpayers experience as a whole. I mean, the general fund is what we talk about when we talk about, can we add additional revenue to help support what's happening with our budget? And that's a consideration. But, again, at the end of the day, it's where is the very, very, very bottom line, because that will be the experience to the taxpayer. So, we might know a levy in a different category is falling off, and you purposely say, hey, here's an opportunity to maybe shift categories. So, that would be an accurate statement, but please also look at the bottom line, because that will be the impact to the taxpayer.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. So, moving forward, you can see that annual OPEB, and we had talked, we had discussed up to $1 million, and the board gave approval for, to levy up to $1 million. And during those discussions, I had said, yes, but we're limited by formula. There's some, like, they, the state of Minnesota might not let us go that high. They have capped us at $722,673. You will see that as a line item for annual OPEB. That's entered. There's also what looks like a very substantial increase in our long-term facility maintenance. Again, this is a timing thing, because just looking at that line item, yes, that's up $2 million, but then, if you go down to the prior year adjustments, you'll see that's actually down more than $2 million, because there were projects that we thought we were going to get done, that we didn't get done, that got added. We had already levied for them, they took the money away, we, it got moved to a different year. So, the net of the two puts us right back to where our long-term facility maintenance typically is, in the 5.5 million range. But when you just look at it as an individual line item, it seems like it's a, like we've gone up significantly.
Director, I'm sorry, Kristin, could you, Director Stivlin has a question.
Is that just, like, a whole bunch of, like, a laundry list of things that didn't get done, or is there one particular thing that is really big that we might notice? Like, oh, there's a roof project or something, or...
It, what actually happened is, it's the state, every now and again, they decide to change the way they're doing things, and...
Not complicated enough, right?
And so, that's actually a culmination of probably three years of kind of the ketchup and adjustments. They were holding off, and didn't do it, and didn't do it, and didn't, and didn't make those large, large, large adjustments, and then, all of a sudden, they said, oh, no, it's probably more appropriate that we make the adjustments this way. And so, that all hit in one year. And we knew that, and so, then, so...
Okay.
So, it's not one large project, but it's not, it's not like we didn't do $2 million worth of projects a year ago.
Okay.
It's, you know, probably more staggered, like, $500,000 here, and...
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
If, if the board would have voted Q comp dollars, would that have improved our general fund situation overall?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to move on to the next slide, which is community service levies, and this is essentially a neutral. There hasn't been essentially any change in, in any of these categories. And so, community service levy, as a levy goes, has helped. Moving on to our debt service levies, and, and I'm gonna actually ask you to go down to the bottom where it says OPEB, and you can see, a year ago, we were levying approximately $5.1 million, and now, we're zero, but that seems to be almost exactly what we increased and our voter-approved. The OPEB debt service levy was a 10-year levy. That debt has expired. It went away. It is paid off. So, what's in the trust now, we don't, we're still not collecting from our taxpayers, essentially, we're not double-dipping and collecting trust and, you know, to pay off the trust and the levy. That's gone. But what happens is, is when you structure debt, you, again, the, the mentality is to hold what we know, and so, we're now paying off, the way the debt is structured with the remainder of our debt in the district, is we're now paying those bonds off at a higher rate than we were a year ago. So, that $5 million, or what was out there, essentially switched from OPEB, that's now gone. You won't see that category next year, and it moved up to help with the payment of the voter-approved debt service levy. So, it was...
So, then, why would we have $722,000 in the, in the levy for OPEB? Joe, their post-employment benefits, on the first page, the general fund levies, it says the state, the maximum we could do is $722,000. But we still have the debt, it's just not from the levy. Is that what you're saying?
So, back in 2008, '09, the board made a decision at that time to issue debt. We set up a trust. So, they issued about $20 million, or they created a trust of about $20 million, and they were having the taxpayers pay that off over a 10-year cycle.
Okay.
That is for the, to support what they, what was put into the trust. The money that's in the general fund is annual expenses. So, we've used the trust, which we still have about $8 million in, we've used the trust for OPEB and the general fund. We've used a combination of the two.
Right.
Right.
So, the trust still exists, it's just that debt that, to take out the $20 million is gone. But now, we're levying for what the general fund was paying for.
Right, right.
Does that?
Yeah, that makes sense.
So, that's why I say.
But we still have the option of not doing that at all.
Yes.
And pulling all of the costs that we have associated with OPEB from the trust.
You do.
And then we would just be drawing down from that trust quicker than if we were using general dollars. And, and when we levy for these $722,000, that does not help our unassigned fund balance at all.
No, that does.
It sure does.
Oh, it does, yeah.
Well, because it, it would, if we, if we levy for it and we get that, it has to go to pay off OPEB. And if we don't levy for it, we can pull it from the trust. So, neither way, does it work, does it really affect your?
But we've been taking it from general fund.
Right, but we wouldn't have to, I guess, is what I'm saying.
You don't have to, but with, so, if we have a $2 million expense overall in OPEB, and if you only pull from the trust, agreed, you didn't have to levy for it. If you only pull from the trust, you have four years before you have no money, which then means, are you now levying for $2 million? And one felt, you know, like, all of a sudden, is that imposed on the taxpayers?
I guess I'm thinking that, at some point in that window of time, we are gonna be bringing a levy in front of the community again, and that, this piece of it could be part of that levy. If we want to re-levy another 10-year levy to pay off the OPEB.
You could.
We could reissue that debt again.
It's an option.
It is an option.
And then pay down, pay down what's in the trust, because what's in the trust came from the community originally, anyway, from a levy, right?
Correct.
Essentially. So, we pay that all down, then we go back to the community, and we say, let's do that again, because we still have these expenses, right?
You, you can. If I recall, the conversations, we've been talking for the two years about OPEB, it is hard for people to sometimes support a levy that doesn't even touch a classroom.
Right, right. It's a risk, it's a risk, for sure.
And so, anyway, that, that is what has happened in our debt, and then our totals. And like I say, at the end of the day, this is, this is what it comes down to, is, is the bottom line. I want to say, I believe in the cover sheet that you received, we're looking at just over a 4% increase at this time in the levy. I will say this, having run, or had the, what is the tax impact numbers run? If a person's property valuation does not change, they're actually going to pay less in taxes, just because our tax base has grown, they're going to, it's actually a negative. You will pay less this year than you did a year ago. If an individual's property taxes were to go up by what our tax base has, which is over 4% in both the referendum market value category and the net tax capacity category, then they will see an increase. And we knew that with the OPEB conversation. And so, it really comes down to what happens with an individual's personal property valuation on what that, what the impact of this levy is going to be.
Right.
What administration recommends tonight is that you adopt the maximum, and, again, the reason being, adopting the maximum still allows for the flexibility of, if there's formula changes, if the Department of Education continues to revise and do different things, nuances that they're working through, you still allow for that flexibility. If you were to set it at a flat dollar amount, that's what it is, and we could be missing out on opportunities that you still have an option to address in December. And then, again, the final levy certification and the truth in taxation hearing will be held December 13th. Any other questions?
So, thank you. So, you, just in a very simple summation, you can always go down, but you can't go up once you hit the number. So, that's, it's, it's really as, kind of simple as that, actually. Any comments or questions? Director Hefner?
When we get to that December 13th meeting, is that where you show the $200,000 house, 250? Okay. And you'll do that again, I presume?
Yes.
Thank you.
Am I mistaken?
Director Patachuk?
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's all right.
They will get a slip with the maximum number, and I'm talking about households, in November if this motion was passed.
That is correct.
Okay.
And an invitation to attend the meeting at Oak Park, and speak their mind if they so wish, right?
That is correct.
Right.
It's the beauty of democracy.
I have a question.
Director Stivlin?
Can you speak to, thank you, can you speak to the, a little bit more about what, so what does it mean that the debt, the voter-approved debt service is now at 9.5 million, and it was at 4?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure if I understand quite what that means.
So, when we sold that debt, and that was the 2015 issue, the way it was structured was over the course of, I believe it was 20 years, and the way it was structured was to maintain a flat tax impact to our taxpayers. And so, knowing that, so, we started off paying, the first year it was, I want to say, just an interest payment or capitalized interest payments, now it's significant principal in interest payments for the remainder, the other, the next 17 years or whatever, still exists on payment of that debt. That is truly, it's, it's essentially, like, you don't, it's not refinancing, because we didn't do it, but it's, like, if you were to refinance your home, and all of a sudden, you're making more payments later on to drop that balance. Again, the way debt is structured is to say, all of the district's debt is included, carried forward and moving across, and you've been provided a color chart that shows you when debt expires, and where we're at, where we're at, and all of a sudden, you can see the dip. That accounts for, it's just the payment towards that particular bond, but the other bonds disappeared or went down in their payments.
So, the net, in terms of the taxpayer, is, is not that much different?
Correct.
It just looks like it in that one category?
The category's switched, yes.
All right, and, Director Lockman?
Director Hoheisel, when you say the tax base has grown, can we attribute that to the growth in Woodbury?
Sure.
That has really?
It's, yeah, it would be the, I mean, it would be the growth everywhere. That actually helps, again, spread the levy.
Right, right. And I was just looking at some information, I think, that I'd asked for earlier about the, just that tax base of, because I'm looking at Woodbury here, roughly about 15% of, it says 15% of municipality located within ISD 34, so, which is significant.
Significant, yeah. It's, it's a large, large component, and I'm trying to, I mean, it's in the top two or three, I think, of, you know, Stillwater, the city of Stillwater is high, Oak Park is starting to sneak up, and so is Lake Gallo, but Woodbury's a big component.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. I think we're ready to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that the school board adopt the maximum proposed 2019 property tax levy.
I'll second.
Discussion?
So, can you just, one more question, sorry.
Did somebody else have?
Nope, go ahead, Director Stivlin.
So, as Director Pearson said earlier, it is a little bit more, that what we're showing here is to approximately $2 million more than it was last year, in terms of the total overall levy amount, but because growth in the community, you know, spreading across a larger tax base, it's actually gonna end up being less.
Again, it depends on valuation.
Yeah, obviously, tons of variation, but we're not talking about a huge increase. $2 million is.
No.
Okay.
No, and that's why, you know, last year, I, we had had the conversation where I said, please don't focus on the bottom-line number, because the tax base comes into it. You can't just say, well, we went up by $2 million, we're going to experience that, that's not necessarily the case.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, board member reports. I really intend to make mine quick. I, I had, actually, I'm gonna make mine very, very quick. I did have the opportunity, I'm on a new committee for mental health, a county committee that is, I, I hope, my hope is that it is, again, it's a, it's a county initiative with, that revolves around mental health and what we can do on a, on a larger scale. I'm kind of representing the school board and the district, I guess I should say, in this committee, so I'm really looking forward to this opportunity to kind of, you know, communicate with them and get some, hear about some of the things that, you know, we're doing, and just for future collaboration, so I'm really excited about that. And Don's probably gonna say more about this, but, yeah, we did have, we had a lovely tour of a couple of the schools and the other day, and I'm, I'm just gonna leave it at that for now, I have a lot more to say, but I'm, oh, I'm sorry, one more shameless plug for BISA, October 8th, it's, if, you know, if anyone can attend that, it's just, I'm sorry, it's the 6th, it's, this is, it's the witching hour for me, so I, I'm fading. But it's a, again, it's a wonderful program, and it's, our students are passionate about it, and if you guys can make some, if any one of us can make some time for that, that'd be a wonderful thing. So, thanks for allowing me to do that. Let's move on to board member reports. Let's start with Director Patachuk tonight.
Okay. What I'm going to do is, and I'm gonna try to give you background for the retreat, where I've asked for some time. And one of the things that, that I picked up on the MSBA advocacy tour was what's called the Legislative Ledger, and that's this. And most of the other materials in your packet lead up to this. And so, what it was, is they took and went through, first of all, they started off with the budget surplus, which is estimated at this time, and this is according to MSBA, and at roughly $375 million. And so, a culminating activity that we will have at the retreat ultimately, is we're going to ask each one of you to say if you were allocating that money in general education formula, and there's three different choices under that, or reduce across subsidy for special education, and there are two choices there, or if it was to go to Gen's Cause of Mental Health, which is the category there. A school lunch was one that, at our legislative meeting, that Denise asked for, and realize, all these figures are for the two-year, because it's a two-year biennium, and two years, that would be the cost if you chose to provide food for lunch for all students. And so, it's something like $327 million. Then, under the next category is double, safe, school, levy, and equalize, and, and that can vary from $36 to $72 per person, or per student, rather. QCOM, if that was to be extended statewide. A gradual ramp up is another choice. And, and then the very bottom one there talks about the gradual participation of 60% voluntary pre-take. And so, they've got different allotments. Now, here's what you can choose to do, is you can break those sums down into those categories, you can create your own if you want to. And, and what we hope to get from that, because eventually, we're gonna ask you to turn it into the legislative committee, is we want to, two things to come out of it, where your priorities are, because some, for example, might say, just put it in the general ed formula, all of it, and that's where we'd work from. Or some might say, no, you gotta deal with things like school safety, or mental health, or whatever. You decide as an individual. And, and that will also influence our strategy. What everybody got in their packet was the legislative platform that we had last year. And what we decided, the group decided last year, was to come up with two priorities, and one was the pension bill, and the other one was the cross subsidy. We were very, very successful, not just because of our efforts, that the pension bill passed. And it was a joint committee. That particular bill to get passed took three years. And what there also had, and this might apply to OPEB or George's comments, even on QCOM, it's sort of like, the longer you postpone it, the cost goes up, it keeps going up. And so, what I would hope is, whether it's cross subsidy or anything that we decide on, sometimes you can't count your success or victories in one year. A lot of times, it takes several years for that to generate. So, that's gonna be one of the things, and I'm gonna just mention some other items in passing, that's in there for your resources, and that's one of the items we're gonna deal with at the retreat. Another thing that Superintendent Pontremi talked about earlier, that we're trying to get off the ground, and it's a little bit of an experience, experiment for us, is we want to invite all the assembly candidates, those who are incumbents and those who would be incumbents, to come to a school board meeting, where there, within that school board meeting, there would be a forum. And, go ahead.
I was just, we have an invitation, a letter for our candidates, that is in final draft form, that we'll send you tomorrow, and I think Chris is going to have one of her staff pony it up for us, so it looks a little bit nicer than what Barbara and I created, but we should have that ready for you to take a look at tomorrow.
And we're hoping, I think, the second meeting in October.
Right, October 25th, I believe.
Yeah. And, and it's something we haven't done before, we experimented before. I've gone to meetings at both AMSD, and I've gone to C meetings. Now is a prime time to talk to legislators, those who are, or those who would be, and, and all assembly candidates are running for election. That's not true in the Senate, where really, you only have one senator, or one Senate spot that is open. So, I'm saying, it's kind of a prime audience, et cetera, and the questions, et cetera, would come out of the legislative committee. One of the things, too, that AMSD made a strong point at the last meeting is, these organizations have to be seen as nonpartisan. And so, we have to operate that way very hard, and it doesn't mean you can't privately do other kinds of things, but in those kind of settings, you really gotta fight very, very hard for objectivity, and I think we will, but it does mention. Okay, a couple other things I want to cover very, very quickly, and I'm gonna talk about documents that you were given in your packet. Barbara is always way ahead of me on these things, because what she's done with an awful lot of these documents, they're under legislation on our website now. And I went through today, and I checked, and I said, wow, this is really neat. So, anybody watching the program who says, gee, we didn't get a copy, you can go there, and you can get your own. So, one of the first items, and there's about four of, of these meetings that I attended or was, was part of, and I want to mention it, because they are resources for you. And one of the first I wanted to mention was on September 19th, which was a Tuesday, MSBA had what they called an advocacy tour, and because our board meeting conflicted with the St. Paul meeting, we had to go to St. Peter for that, so we didn't have as good a turnout as we usually do from this board. The advocacy tour brings together school board members and superintendents to discuss policy and funding issues that are impacting their school districts. During this meeting, ideas are generated for MSBA's legislative agenda. And, and so, one of the things you have is a PowerPoint that they gave out in that meeting. What I'm gonna hold off is the talking about that till we get to the retreat, so.
Can I interject, though? This came out of our legislative working group meeting on Wednesday, was it, Mike? And I was so excited after this meeting, it was, I feel like we really covered a lot of ground, and I would just highly ask that everyone, we can, we'll cover it in the retreat, like you said, but everyone take a look at this, because the information, it was fantastic, our discussion was fantastic, so I just wanted to commend Director Patachuk on that, that was a very good meeting.
Yeah. Then, a second item is this green sheet, and this is the legislative platform for 2019, and that came out of Schools for Equity and Education. Don Hovland and I actually attended a meeting of probably a dozen others when this was being drafted, and one of the big changes in that document, it's a lot simpler than in the past. And I think AMSD might be moving in that direction, where they almost gave too much, you look at it, whether you're a legislator or anybody else, and you say, oh, my gosh, who's gonna go all the way to that? So, this is a more streamlined version, and, and so, look at that, but keep in mind, that's their draft. AMSD, at this point, has not put out their draft platform. If we get that, we'll make it available at that meeting as well. Then a couple other quick documents, I'm not gonna spend time now going through it, and that is special education funding, and this was a meeting that Tom Melcher went to Senator Pratt. Senator Pratt, who is not up for reelection, has been holding monthly meetings on special education. And it's a very, very thorough committee. On August 21st, Tom Melcher, who is regarded as kind of the state guru on finance, and especially special education, this is his PowerPoint. So if you want to look at that, you may. That's another one. Then what else I gave you is that on September 21st, which was a Friday, C had their monthly meeting, and two speakers presented there. One was Bill Morris, and Bill is regarded, there are certain names that if you have at these meetings, you get wow attendance. Bill Morris is one of those, because he's a pollster. And, and again, this is really polling a representative group for the whole state of Minnesota, and these are their findings. So take a look at it, and there are interesting trends. Also, who spoke at that meeting, as I mentioned, was Senator Pratt, and he had some comments and observations that he wanted to share, that he's picked up in his meetings. And so that also, some of those comments I'll share at the retreat. I think that is pretty much it, in terms of what I want to do tonight, to let you know. Anything I missed?
Is that a joke? I'm just kidding. Good job, teasing. I'm just teasing.
No, no, it's fair.
Sorry. Nice job. Thank you so much. Director Pearson?
Mine will be much quicker. Just a couple things. I just wanted to let parents, us up here who have high school kids and other families with high school kids at least, on Fee Pay, you can make donations to BISA. So there's a spot right on there to make donations, which is pretty easy, and it's such a cool thing that if we can get behind that, that'd be great. The second is homecoming. First, a thank you to the community who has allowed students to paint the town red and community sponsors, the restaurants. I don't know if this is new this year, restaurants who are giving part of their proceeds to cancer research on behalf of our students. I don't know if it's just the football team or the district, so that's a cool, really cool thing. So thanks to the community. And then the carnival tomorrow, go to that, it's fun. And I'm sure they would still accept volunteers, for many of us or anybody watching, and it'll be a great night.
Thank you. Director Lockman?
I have a lightning report.
All right, all righty. Thank you. Director Stivlin?
Thank you. I just have one quick thing. I think I mentioned last, at the last meeting, that I was going to go to the MSBA Phase 3 and Phase 4 training. I did that, it's been a couple weeks now, but Phase 3 is building a high performance board, and Phase 4 is policy development and community engagement. All three incredibly interesting topics. Really, really well attended, very fun, interesting. I looked at lots of information, and I have shared some of it with Chair Pelletier, because she and I are kind of starting to begin working on, looking at our orientation to see if we can maybe beef up what we do with the new board members. I see some of them are potentially, potentially new board members sitting in the audience still here tonight. And so we want to make sure that when we do have an election, we have new people here, that we make sure that the time of that transition goes really well and that we give lots of opportunities for answers. We're talking about possibly creating a mentor program, which a lot of districts do, which we haven't, I don't know that we've done that in the past, but I think it'd be kind of fun. So more information to be coming on that.
Thank you. Director Heppner?
Yeah, board members, you have the minutes from the EMI September 19th meeting, and I just want to point out two things. Executive Director Lubke presented a final draft of the Theory of Change document that the staff has been working on. As EMI, or Equity Alliance, presents its platform and programs across the state, the Theory of Change document is meant to help explain the philosophy behind its important work. And here's the line that I really liked. "When leaders across the educational system understand how to keep barriers around race, ethnicity, gender identity, sexual orientation, culture, and socioeconomic status from undermining student achievement, it is hoped that districts will engage in and advance equity practices." And we had a great discussion about this Theory of Change document at the board meeting. And then the last point, the board heard from Inver Grove Heights EMI Representative Cindy Nordstrom, who had just taken an educational trip to Finland. And she said her three biggest takeaways were, number one, there's no testing in Finland other than teacher-designed tests. Two, there's no Finnish word for accountability. And three, teachers believe it's part of their task to make learning fun. Just kind of interesting, because I'm not quite sure the boss is on the same page. I would like to mention, when we get to that discussion of special education, and I think I mentioned this before, Brenda Cassilius actually brought it up at the summer seminar, we could get rid of the term cross subsidy, which I think very few people understand, if we could start using unfunded mandates instead of cross subsidy, I think we might get a little bit more traction. And then lastly, this will be the third time I mention this, on Wednesday, October 10th, at 6:30, White Bear Unitarian Universalist Church in Madamidi is having a representative from Sandy Hook Promise, who's focusing on preventing gun violence and other forms of victimization through mental health and wellness programs. Dana Montgomery will provide an overview of the programs, which are available at no cost to schools which choose to implement them. Wednesday, October 10th, 6:30, White Bear Unitarian Universalist Church. That's it.
Thank you, Director Heppner. Director Hovland?
Got anything?
Okay, all right, thank you. Working group reports. Director Heppner?
Yeah, the Policy Working Group did meet, spent a lot of time with John Perry on attendance. We were going to meet October 1st, but we got a conflict, so before our folks leave, we need to get together and set up another, another time. But we had a great discussion around student attendance, and we'll be bringing something to you, hopefully, one of the October meetings.
Thank you. All right, I have a little bit of an update. It's, I've been trying, I've been looking at this, trying to edit it in my mind, but I, I'll do my best here. This is an update, and I'll send this, I think I'll just send this to the board, possibly. This is an update on the World's Best Workforce meeting that occurred a couple of weeks ago. So I'll try to do my best to shorten this. The goal of the first meeting was to begin work on goals and metrics for the 2019-2020 plan, and to brainstorm community strategies and initiatives, both to inform the community but also to engage them in helping this initiative succeed. They split the group into five teams based on their preferred areas of focus. We had two teams address all children ready for school, and all third graders can read at grade level. One team, oh, I'm sorry, one team addressed all racial and economic achievement gaps between students are closed, and two teams addressed all students are ready for career in college, as well as all students graduate from high school. He commented, one of our leaders commented that the teams were engaged and respectful of other team members, and the level of energy and enthusiasm from this group was extremely high. Bob McDowell's contributions were invaluable, as there were many questions about the strategies, metrics, and acronyms that were not obvious. They had high hopes, I think they felt very good about this meeting. Two key themes that emerged were worth mentioning. Both teams discuss, both teams discuss all children ready for school are concerned that a significant number of students are unknown to us before they start school and therefore can't be screened. They understand that those who are in the system get tested, but believe that identifying a larger part of the population is a good opportunity for community initiatives. Both teams discussing all students ready for career in college mentioned the Stillwater Public Schools, area public schools pushes all students toward college. That is likely not true, but it is the perception of some. We have opportunity here, but will need better understanding of reality before recommending a path forward. I would like the board to know that both Patty Olson and I, and this was Randall Newton, are impressed with the experience, the professionalism, and the caliber of this team. We still have a lot of work to do, but we believe everyone left the meeting with a good feeling about this project and our role. I expect everyone to come back. And the parting words were, I also want to mention our, we had one student that was able to make it, Sophie McAfee. Sophie contributed at a very high level on her team. She was very engaged and a key contributor in the discussion that she was a part of, which is all children are ready for school. I would welcome a few additional students at future meetings, especially if they are of the caliber of Sophie. Please let us know if you have any questions or additional directions at this time. That's it. I think it sounded like it went well, and thank you to Bob McDowell for your assistance on that. Moving on, Director Lockman, finance.
So yes, I'll be sending an email to the finance committee. We'll talk about the upcoming meeting on the 3rd and seeing what we can do to perhaps start to have a conversation about process and planning for the retreat.
Thank you. We covered legislative, anything extra, Director Patachuk? All right, thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.